Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Thanks for sharing your afternoon with us. If we were in West Texas with this weather, we would say that there was an norther coming in. But unless you've been to West Texas, well, you wouldn't understand that language. So it's a... That said, any introductions?
No, sir. It just looks like everyone's here.
Okay. Pastor Adam from the Hatch Church, thank you for being here. And if you will lead us in the invocation, and Councilman Arnold will lead us in the pledge. Thank you.
Mayor, council, my privilege. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we come before you today, Lord, with humble hearts. Lord, I thank you for these men and women and their commitment to you, their commitment to seek your wisdom. And, Lord, I know, as we know in Proverbs, Chapter 2, you say that the greatest treasure of all is, next to you, is seeking your wisdom, seeking you out and your knowledge. And so I pray for each one here. I pray for the council. I pray that you give them guidance and direction. I pray, Lord, that, as these are men and women of integrity, that they would seek you out first, and that you would open their eyes and give them the knowledge they need and the wisdom they need, Lord, to make these important decisions throughout this day and the weeks to come. Thank you for their commitment to serve in this community. And I do pray for their families as well, that you would protect them, guide them, and keep them safe, Lord, as they serve in this capacity. We thank you and give you the glory for it, in Jesus' name. Amen.
If you would please follow me in the pledge to our great nation. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor Kirkendall.
Here.
Mayor Protem Kuknil.
Here.
Councilman Arnold.
Here.
Councilman Blair.
Here.
Councilman Lamerson.
Here.
Councilman Lozelle.
Here.
Councilwoman Wilcox.
Here.
All present.
Thank you, Dana.
Mayor, I just have a quick statement.
Yes.
Happy birthday to any of the Marines out there today.
Could we get the... Let's see, we say, is it former Marines? That's the proper... Well, happy birthday. We have one presentation today. We're totally honored to have Steve Walker of Yavapai College come and visit with us. Steve, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Kirkendall, and council members. I'm Steve Walker, Vice President of Yavapai College, and I'm joined by District Governing Board Member Ray Sigafus from District 1. I think many of you may know Ray. He is a 46-year resident of Prescott, has his own CPA firm. Here, he's been a civic leader over decades, having served on boards of the fine arts, the hospital. I think he's very proud of 28 years of service on the board of Embry-Riddle Aeronautical University. And this month marks his 10th year on the Yavapai College District Governing Board. Does you know that, Ray?
That and $0.50 gets me a cup of coffee.
Well, we just have a few slides we'd like to share with you about the activities of the college. In the last year, we have been updating our strategic plan for years 2015 through 2020. We tweaked our vision statement a little bit. "Yavapai College makes our community a premier place to learn, work, and to live." And key in on "learn, work, and live," how do I move this forward? There we go. Because the district governing board has three goal areas. And one is excellence in education. The second is regional economic development. And the third is cultural and social opportunities for our residents. And under Goal 1, education, I think you all know some of the highlight areas that we offer, adult basic ed, no citizen left behind. We offer an outstanding dual-credit program for all of our high school students. Many can earn as much as a year of college credit at no cost through Yavapai College while they're still in high school. Of course, our developmental ed. We are an outstanding transfer school for those students interested in moving on to NAU, ASU, or U of A, or a school beyond without losing a single credit. Our outstanding career and technical ed programs, the best of any community college in the region. I want to thank Jeff Burt for coming out to the grand opening of our new business incubator at our Career and Technical Education Center a couple of weeks ago. We'll talk a little more about that. That's going to be a wonderful opportunity for high school students, for Yavapai College students, and for people of our community to start their own business and use the equipment out there to make things that we can export. And, of course, our continuing education, our Osher Lifelong Learning Institute. We have more than 5,000 lifelong learners in Yavapai College. The second board goal relates to economic development. As you know, we reorganized the college around our Regional Economic Development Center. We're doing more custom training, more career coaching than ever, working directly with our industry partners. One of the things that we have taken on for all of our municipalities, groups like G Prep, PVEDF, is all of the impact and analysis. We've done labor analysis for the West County, for the East County, for a number of other cities and towns in both, in all parts of Yavapai County. And we're estimating that's about $150,000 in service alone on data analysis just in the last year. And, of course, our outstanding Small Business Development Center services. Other economic development-related goals in the academic area are our very well-known nursing and allied health programs, RadTech, business, I mentioned career technical, and public safety. We have our Wildland Fire. We have our EMT program. And we also have, of course, the NARDA, our Northern Arizona Regional Training Center, the largest police academy in Northern Arizona. The final goal, cultural enrichment, we offer a lot. I don't know if you saw in the Daily Courier last weekend, but it was the lineup of all the activities coming up in the Performing Arts Center. And the college programming in theater arts, vocal and instrumental programming is going to be front and center, more so than our national programming, although we will still have a very impressive national series of shows, the Met Live Opera, and so on. So our art galleries, our libraries, all the classes and lifelong learning that we offer up. So as part of our strategic planning initiative, what we did was do survey work, exhaustive work in committees, and basically organized our strategies and tactics under our goals of student success, economic responsiveness, community engagement, and then added organizational development, which is about employee engagement and satisfaction, and, of course, fiscal stewardship because of the importance of managing taxpayer funds. And we feel very good that we have a set of goals, strategies, and tactics that are really going to position Yavapai College at the forefront of higher ed in Arizona and particularly serve Yavapai County as we move forward. Next slide, please. I just want to leave you with this last slide, which has been a really important goal of the district governing board over many years, and that is to keep Yavapai College affordable and accessible to everyone in the county. And I think you can see that we are accomplishing that goal with about $2250 for 30 credits in terms of annual tuition and fees for a year at Yavapai College as compared to four to five times that right now at an Arizona university. And you can see the even higher cost for private institutions. So Yavapai College, your community college, I left you with a handout that has this on it, and also on the back shows that what an associate of arts degree can do for you in terms of additional lifelong earnings. And so with that, Ray, anything that you'd like to say, or we can open it up to questioning?
Well, I was reflecting back on 10 years, and I had not realized it was 10 years. So what can I say?
I checked it this morning.
Okay. It certainly has been one of my goals to make that chart look good. And in terms of keeping the costs down and keeping the programs high in terms of their delivery, you guys do delivery. We do the policy for keeping the costs down as much as we can. If there are any particular questions about the current programs or what we have to say around here, I'll be happy to try and answer them to the best of my ability.
Looks like Charlie has a question or a comment.
Colin. Mayor, thank you. Steve, I just want to take this opportunity and thank you over the last four years for keeping me apprised of what's happening at the college. The college has been a great asset, especially in the economic development realm, as that has grown with G Prep. And I just wanted to thank you personally for everything you've done for the college and the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Charlie. You took the words sort of out of my mouth, because I wanted to thank you and Councilman Kuknil for your efforts to work with us in a positive way, and particularly to help us get some funding for the tennis courts, that outstanding new facility. Go by there and check it out. There's people playing even in the snow. And we've had a number of tournaments bringing money to this town. And Mayor Kirkendall, I want to thank you for your leadership in maintaining a very positive relationship with the college during your long tenure as mayor. We appreciate you.
Well, thank you. I have a comment more to Ray, I guess. We both can remember when Yavapai College was a figment of our imagination.
Yep.
Along with Dick Walraven and a lot of folks in this community. And now it's a reality that we can, everybody in Yavapai County can hang their hat on. So thank you, Ray.
Well...
I spent a long weekend with Ray and Neil Hurd, I think, if I remember, in New Orleans.
Yep.
We went down to get a physical examination and ended up watching a ballgame at Silverdome.
It was.
I think it was.
New Orleans versus San Francisco, and...
About 40 years ago.
New Orleans lost.
Yeah. So it's been a long journey. The, you know, the initial conversation about Prescott's college was more along the vocational lines, because even back then, we was trying to keep our young people at home and find a job for them. And the college led the way in so many different areas to bring job creation to the community. So we thank you for the leadership, both of you, that you continue to provide.
As long as we're going down a little bit of memory lane, I took a class at Yavapai College before the buildings were built. I took a class in ground school, aviation ground school. It was in the basement of a building out at Fort Whipple.
I remember that, yeah. Sure do.
Yeah, Mayor. I was just going to say, Steve, thanks for the recognition, but, you know, we got to spread that around. It takes at least four to pass anything, and we've had a lot of support on all this entire bench. But really appreciate echoing a little bit what Charlie said on the economic development side. I mean, my son even went to CTEC to learn some diesel automotive when he was going through high school. And I think that is going to be a great asset. We talked a lot recently about what we're doing for economic development. I think we finally got the pieces in place. I think we got G Prep up. We have our own effort here with Jeff here in the city. And I think with CTEC, it's going to be a great add-on. I think they got something to go out and sell now. So thank you for that continued support.
And if I might do an unscripted kind of promo, we will, in the future, in this calendar, and I feel sorry, fiscal year, and probably into the next fall, be putting together some focus groups, and we may ask some of you to join us to give some feedback on the questions of what Yavapai College should look like in, say, five years, or what's important in the next short period, five years being defined as short, for us to do and us to put our programs together. So that may come up for you, like I say, in the next year or 18 months. It's not on the script, but we're working on that at the board level.
Ray, thanks for your contingent's support of the community. We appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you.
You also, Steve. Thank you.
Have a good afternoon.
Okay, move along to the consent agenda.
Item A, approval of minutes for the city council meetings held on October 22nd, 2015, October 27th, and November 3rd, 2015. Item B, adoption of resolution number 4349-1518, approving an intergovernmental agreement between Yavapai College and the City of Prescott for the Northern Arizona Regional Training Academy, city contract number 2016-094. Item C, award of city contract number 2016-096 to Polydine Incorporated for a three-year unit price contract to purchase wastewater treatment plant polymer in a total amount not to exceed $159,000, with an option to extend the two additional, for two additional one-year periods wastewater fund. And item D, approval of purchase of payment de-icing agent from Desert Mountain Corporation using Yavapai County Contract Number 1520447 in an annual estimated amount of $50,000, city contract number 2016-099 Streets and Open Space Fund.
Questions, the council? Anybody? Manager of the item D, are we forecasting we're going to have a cold winter? De-icing?
We're going to have a wet winter.
Okay.
And if it's like today, it's going to be cold, too.
Okay. Do you have a motion on the consent agenda?
Mayor, move to approve consent agenda items A through D.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Vote, please. Jim, you need to flip your switch.
Do it one more time.
Okay. You got her.
Passes unanimously.
Okay, liquor license consent agenda.
Mayor and council, on today's liquor license consent agenda, there is one application for a Series 15 special event liquor license. It is from Prescott Area Shelter Services. The event location is at Sacred Heart Parish, and the application has been reviewed and determined to be in compliance with city requirements. The event time is from 6:00 to 10:00 p.m., but the actual license itself is from 1:00 to 11:30 p.m. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, that's off the city street, so inside the private sector, the church sector. Okay. Any questions, the council, on the...
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion.
Take it.
I move to forward special event liquor license application 2A to the Arizona State Department of Liquor with recommendation of approval.
Second.
Motion made, seconded. Vote, please.
Passes unanimously.
Let's go to the regular agenda. Item A.
Item 3A, appointment of Cynthia Gresser as Chair of the Art in Public Places Committee. Mayor and council, in August 2015, the council appointed members to the newly formed Art in Public Places Committee, and in September, the first meeting was held. At that meeting, the committee discussed a need for the appointment of a chairperson to the committee. And on October 27th, the council appointment committee met to consider the appointment of a chairperson. After discussion and consideration of the members, the appointment committee voted to recommend Cynthia Gresser be appointed as Chair of the Art in Public Places Committee. And I believe Ms. Gresser is in attendance.
Cynthia, come and tell us what the Chair of the Art in Public Places will be doing.
Hopefully, nothing that upsets council, sir. We will be moving forward, working on the resolution that was passed regarding art in public places. We plan on moving forward with an inventory of the city's public artwork, works of art, and hopefully getting a map put together of that at some point in the future, and improving the process for the submission of works of public art.
Yeah, Mayor, I just wanted to thank Cindy for stepping up to this. This kind of really came out of the whole bench thing a long time ago, where we just kept having, you know, the next bench, the next mural, the next timeline. We didn't have anything in place to kind of vet this stuff and basically bring two sides together, you know, the artist and the government and the public places. So thank you so much for stepping up and doing this. It's good to see this right before we leave, that it's in cement. So good job.
Thank you.
Anyone else on the council? We are now in the regular agenda. Any comments from the public? Is that a heads up, Dan? Okay, thanks.
Mayor, I move to appoint Cynthia Gresser as Chair of the Fine Art in Public Places Committee for Prescott.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Vote, please.
Passes unanimously. Item B, public hearing approval and adoption of ordinance number 4956-1494 and ordinance and ordinance number 4958-1496 for Deepwell Ranch's north annexation, master plan amendment and rezoning, ANX 15-001, MP 15-001, and RZ 15-004. City initiated applications, including all our portions of APNs 102-01-213U, 102-001-213W, An area approximately 1,304 acres. Owner, James Deepwell Ranches, number 1, Brook, and City of Prescott. And then I'll read both of the ordinances by title. Ordinance number 4956-1494, an ordinance of the Mayor and Council of the City of Prescott, Yavapai County, Arizona, extending and increasing the corporate limits of the City of Prescott by annexing approximately 1,304 acres of residentially zoned land, R1L-70, generally lying west of the Prescott Municipal Airport and north of the Pioneer Parkway into the City of Prescott and assigning zoning classification here, too. An ordinance number 4958-1496, an ordinance of the Mayor and Council of the City of Prescott, Yavapai County, Arizona, amending the zoning of certain property within the City of Prescott, generally located west of the Prescott Municipal Airport and north of Pioneer Parkway, from rural estate, two-acre zoning district to eight new zoning districts consisting of business, regional zoning, multifamily high zoning, mixed-use zoning, single-family 18 zoning, industrial light zoning district.
I think before we go any further, George, you have some new information for us, my understanding, and there's been some additional information from the public that we've received since we talked about this last time. This has been before the Planning and Zoning Commission came out with a recommendation. We've had a couple of sessions with the city council on this, and there's been lots of good comments come forward and suggestions. As we go into the public portion today, if there's any comments that are somewhat new to the cause, the Chair will certainly honor that conversation with the public. If it's something that we've hashed out many times in the past and thought we had worked our way through it, why, in the interest of time, we'd like to talk about new things. So go ahead, George.
Thank you, Mayor. Also, in the interest of time, we have talked about all of the technical details of both of the annexations at your prior meetings. So today, because both annexations are under our Proposition 400 requirements, one of the things that's necessary is a synopsis of public comments as a result of the public, the 60-day public comment period that closed yesterday, actually. The vast majority of the comments we received occurred early enough for us to include them in your agenda packet, so they're part of the staff report, and we gave you a synopsis of what each person wrote to you or said to you during previous meetings. We did get five comments that came in after the agenda packet items were submitted for review and approval by the city manager. So I would like to spend just a couple of minutes, synopsis, to give you a synopsis of those five items. Certainly, staff is available to answer any questions that come up during the conversation. And I will point out just a couple of very minor things associated with the later review comments as we go along.
Okay.
So as I noted, we received five comments after the comment, excuse me, after the agenda packet was put together. One of those was very detailed description of the area between here and Chino Valley, but there was no particular request or suggestion on behalf of the action taken, just general information for council members to understand. Another referenced the potential impacts on property and community in the area. That recommendation was for us to look at the possibility of limiting human consumption in relation to growth rather than expanding the city limit lines. So it was rather general in a request not to proceed with an annexation. One letter discussed the scientific aspect of lag between pumping water back into the ground and the ability to pump it back out again later, the lag between recharge and actual ability to pump it back out through our wellfields. One letter we received from Citizens Water Advisory Group recommended that any new and future development within the city, and including within the annexation areas, be referred to and asked to conform to the city's water management policies. We have a smart water policy, which we advocate to all existing development and to any new development already, but that was a recommendation of theirs that we pursue that. And we had one email that opposed the annexation because of concerns for the additional water consumption, traffic impacts on Pioneer Parkway, and potentially Williamson Valley Road, as well as noise and access issues associated with the additional traffic for those areas. So that's a brief synopsis of the five that we've received afterwards. I will point out that one of the primary issues that came up during the initial process with public comment was Petition Drive, that we received multiple petitions, and you've all had a chance to look at these. Those petitions were primarily associated with ANX 15002, which is the annexation that had initially a multifamily-zoned area. And as a result of that public input, the Planning Commission recommended, and council seems to be moving in the direction of removing that multifamily and making it all single-family, SF18, which is the equivalent of Pinion Oaks zoning.
Yeah.
And with that, councils...
George, I do. There seems to be still some confusion about access. Would you, and particularly an old map that, from years ago, that the BLM had designated an east-west connector of some type along the lower portion, would you highlight that and also elaborate on where access we would hope would be?
So the access route, I believe you're talking about, that was initially going to be planned for and partially actually identified with a city right-of-way, or a street right-of-way, West County at the time, would have followed this route, and then across the south edge of what's now Pinion Oaks subdivision, which was not there at the time, and would have connected to Willow Creek Road. It was intended to provide an east-west connector on the north side of town, which we didn't have at the time. That was not constructed. The roadway and the right-of-way, this portion of the right-of-way in particular, was abandoned as part of the planning and development process for Pioneer Parkway. So at this point in time, access is anticipated to occur approximately here, directly opposite the current intersection with Commerce Drive, would allow a roadway of an arterial size, most likely, to move northward and cut through this annexation to provide primary access. Construction of that roadway, along with any action necessary to cross the BLM land to get there, this is Pioneer Park, a portion of this is BLM, and would require their participation in any review and approval, would be something that we would expect a future developer of the property under ANX 15002 to have to take care of. It is not something planned by the city at this point in time, and it's not something anticipated to be a city-developed road.
Okay. One other point, there was a question on the financial side of this study that was brought forward, and I see our friend is here that presented that. The question was asked, and are you, would you like to elaborate on why the two annexations were lumped together in the financial analysis?
I could actually hit some of the topics, though.
Okay.
That part of it, we can bring up the experts as necessary. One of the things that we look at with, especially with developments that will contain commercially-zoned properties, which ANX 15001 has a significant amount of, is proximity to existing or future residential development. You need the businesses to serve the residences, but you need the residences to serve the businesses. They're inextricably linked, and because of the close proximity of the two annexations, and the fact that this area would have contained no commercial zoning due to its proximity to residential zoning on all sides... to residential zoning on all sides, it was important to take into account that development here, with the homes that will eventually occur here with an annexation, will be contributors to the commercial development that occurs in the other annexation. The two are too close in proximity to operate and examine independently of one another.
Okay. Counsel, questions?
I have a question, Mayor.
Shoot.
Actually, more or less clarification, condensed maybe one or two words. You said proposed entrance. Is this in any way a proposal of an entrance?
No, sir.
Okay. Is this in any way going to connect with this? These two, are they going to connect?
There are no plans to connect at this point, no, sir.
Okay. So, this is off the board, this little line here, this proposed room?
That's correct. That is right-of-way that was abandoned and has gone back to the ownership of the BLM.
Thank you.
And 002 is all single-family residential now?
It's all proposed to be single-family 18, and is the same zoning as Pioneer, excuse me, as Pinion Oaks.
I have a question on that.
Yes.
SF-18, when you say propose, right now, the city is not saying how big, they can only be, they can be a maximum size or a minimum size?
Minimum size. The 18 would be a minimum of 18,000 square feet, just under a half an acre.
Okay. So, that's the least they could be is a half acre?
That's correct.
Okay.
Chris, did you have something? Okay. Jim?
I'm ready to make a motion to close the public hearing.
Well, let's go to...
Mayor, can I just, Mayor? I understand that for purposes of expediency, the staff presentation was combined between the two annexations and two proposed rezonings. For public hearing purposes, I think we should have two separate public hearings because the second set of ordinances has not been read yet. So, the first is on 001, the first read that was done, so the public hearing should be limited to 001, and then, once that item's done, then we can move to 002 and have that read before the public hear it, great.
And you want that as a part of the motion?
No, no. Just for public hearing purposes, because you're going to go through the motions on ordinances addressing strictly 001, and then, when the clerk has to read 002, then you can open up the floor to the public on that item.
Okay. To respond to Counsel Lamerson, we could close the public hearing, but still take public comment on the ordinance.
No. You should have the public hearing, see if there's any additional public comment to 001.
Okay.
And then, if there, once that's done, close the public hearing and move on.
Okay. Comments from the public? Yes.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I appreciate the fact that Mr. Worley read a synopsis, and unfortunately, he gave the wrong impression about the comments that the Citizens Water Advocacy Group made, so I'm going to read a brief part of the actual comment letter.
Okay.
In addition, as a member of the, without my SEWAG hat on, as a member of the steering committee of the original Prop. 400 initiative, when we asked for comments to be read at the council meeting, which is in the resolution, the purpose was, when the public cannot see the comments that were all put into the council packets, we realize and are grateful for the fact that we, that the public took the opportunity to make lots and lots of comments this time, and I think that's especially wonderful, actually, from my point of view, because the public participated. But unfortunately, the brief synopsis just did not do the comments justice. The only comments that were summarized extremely briefly were the five that were received late, so there was no summary, there's no public summary of the comments that were received before that, and so the public doesn't know what they were. So, I don't know how you're going to fix that, but I hope that then, well, I don't know. I'll leave that up to you. Now, I'm just going to read what the Citizens Water Advocacy Group, not the whole letter, but just a brief paragraph. Based on historical city records, about 27% of annual groundwater pumping is applied to landscapes. This is lost water. The City of Prescott now has no meaningful controls on landscape water use, thus failing to take advantage of a significant opportunity to conserve groundwater. For the first increment of 450 acre-feet per year allotted to the Deepwell Annexation, restrictions on landscape water use could reduce groundwater use up to 120 acre-feet per year, enough to support indoor water use for up to 500 homes. Therefore, the Citizens Water Advocacy Group encourages the City of Prescott to begin now to consider ordinances for new construction that will minimize use of groundwater for irrigating residential and commercial landscaping, thus extending the city's ability to supply new development using the existing water portfolio. Water Smart Landscapes use less water, preserve beauty, and prevent runoff. Visit PrescottWaterSmart.com, the city's website, for tips, ideas, and examples. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, just wanted to say, I agree with Leslie 100%, and we need to be moving in that direction. When you look at our water usage and you see the summer months come and we just spike, that just says one thing, that we're pouring it on the ground, so I know in my last 14 days, I don't know how much support I can give, but I agree with that.
What are you going to do in 14 days?
Take a bath, take a shower, play in the water, I guess, I don't know.
Okay. Anyone else from the public?
Mayor, can I just address the one comment about the presentation of public comment in the charter? It's Article 1, Section 4. The charter requirement is that a public presentation of the public comments received must be made to the city council by city staff. My opinion, the, all of the written comments were presented to the council in a public packet available to the public as a public record. The summary by the staff at not only this meeting, but prior meetings of comments, as well as today's comments, is a sufficient presentation to the city council, and if the city council has any questions about particular written comments that it received, it certainly could ask staff about those written comments for further public discussion at this or any prior meeting. So, I think the presentation today meets the requirements of the city charter.
Thank you, John. Good afternoon.
Mayor, City Council, Thomas Slayback, 715 East Goodwin Street. I was the Chair of Proposition 400, and I can only reiterate what Leslie Hoy just stated. It is not the backers of the proposition's intent that a public hearing was just to be given to the city council. The public hearing on the comments was to be held publicly, all the comments made available, and then the city to respond to those comments at that hearing. The other problem I have with this whole procedure is that there've only been two public hearings, and they've both been part of a city council meeting. We should have had at least one meeting in the evening, so the working population of Prescott could have attended and made comments there. The other thing that I want to repeat is basically a comment I made a couple city council meetings back at the beginning hearing, and that is, "I'm completely in favor of annexations that involve commercial industrial land. Get that into the city. It makes money for the city." But I'm totally against annexing land to have more houses. That's a losing proposition, and we had some voodoo economics showing that the whole annexation would make money. It should have been, rather than the way it's split now, it should have been split between commercial and residential. The 25-year study on this is not appropriate for residential, because the costs associated with residential will be forever. It should have been 100-year study. We're going to have to be supplying police, fire protection, street maintenance, lighting, sewer water, forever. And the city's in deep doo-doo right now, owing probably somewhere between 70 and 120 million dollars for the retirement system. And here, we're going to annex property that needs more services. You know, residential approximately takes in $1 compared to providing services that cost $1.50. It's just digging the hole deeper that the city has a problem financially. So, that's my feeling about this annexation. Thank you.
Tom, I think there'll always be the argument of the chicken or egg. You need rooftops before businesses can be supported.
It's also been said just the opposite way around.
I know. It's a matter of opinion. And, you know, being in the private business sector my entire life, I probably think different than some folks that don't want to see any more growth here. I've been proud to be part of a community that I think have done a wonderful job in my 52 years here of providing a community where the quality of life is, it's good, and a lot of people would like to live here. But if you can't subscribe to the fact that we're not entitled to close the gates, but to try to bring growth into the city where the city can influence the type of growth that becomes a part of the community, I just happen to think we're on the right track by warning all of these folks that someday, over a period of the next 15, 20 years, that will join us as residents, that they really want to be a part of the city rather than an area that still has septic tanks and dirt streets and those things. So, but we're entitled to a difference of opinion.
And we have one. I've been coming here since 1954. I've lived here permanently for nearly 38 years, and every year, someone on the city council comes up with a bright idea that winds up costing me more money.
Yeah.
I would say we could have residential annexations if they actually paid the price of the annexation. So, the growth has to pay for growth, and actually, the city says that, but that isn't, that's not what is happening. So, if we were to see this residential growth come in at this annexation, the people living there should make up all of the back monies that it's cost the current citizens to provide services for that growth, and then, the people living there should be paying for those services to continue. That's my problem with residential annexation.
Good.
Thank you.
Thanks for your comments. Yes.
I'm Carl Day, 4660 Fremont Drive, Prescott.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Council and Mayor. This is a short time, I don't want to take up all my time now. Got a question regarding the water, the 925 acre-feet that each parcel's entitled to, George. Are you going to, the city going to merge that as the one number that they can have, or is each individual annexation going to have to live within their means of 925?
Any feelings on...
The city entered into water settlement agreement with James Deepwell Ranch. That water was made available to James Deepwell Ranch without a specific location of where it would necessarily be used. That is, it could be used in the city if the property is annexed, or it can be used outside the city if the property is not annexed. However, the meeting of the minds between Deepwell Ranch and the city was that, according to a pre-annexation development agreement, which includes these areas under consideration today, it was in the mutual best interest of those two parties to have that water applied and used for development within the pre-annexation development area, so that, among other things, we would get return flow to the wastewater treatment plant.
Okay. Thank you. Clear the air.
Yeah, clear the air, but a what-if question. 20 years down the road, you've got 80 to 100% development in both parcels, 001 and 002, and they're limited, correct, to 1,850. What if you see six months into the year, they've used 1,000? That means they're using more than they should. California and other places, when you have electrical issues, you have brownouts. Are you going to dry out those areas for certain hours of the day? You're going to have a hospital up there. Obviously, you can't do that for a hospital. Well, how's the city going to approach it when and if they start using more water that's in the agreement? You know, the rest of the folks in Prescott should be entitled to their water. The new area that you're going to annex, they have to live within their limit, and I'd like to know what mechanism the city water department's going to have to put limiters on those people if they overuse water.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I'm sure the future councils will accept that challenge and handle it when the time comes. Anyone else? Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Mayor. I am new to Prescott, Arizona, and I'm sitting in the back looking at your land, and I'd like to side with a lady's point. I'm not buying that parcel, but if I was, I'd like to know about it. And I almost bought some land here in Prescott, Arizona, but then I've come to read the courier, and I find out there's all kinds of water problems around here. So, I abstained. But I think the lady's point is well-taken. I'm a member of the public. I don't think that I'm interested in that piece of property, but I would, if I was, I would very much appreciate knowing what my fellow citizens had to say about it. I've learned quite a bit about your water, talking to the citizens here in this town, and I would appreciate if folks would rally around your point and let the public comments be...
Sir, can I get your name for the record?
James R. Lundey, L-U-N-D-Y. Thank you, sir.
Leslie is well-respected, and we do listen, and thanks for living here. Okay. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
Teresa Jones. I live with my husband at 1310 Westridge Drive. I first want to be clear, are we specifically taking public comments just on 001 or 002 as well?
001.
Just 001? Okay. Well, then, I will wait until we hit that.
Thank you. Okay. Okay, Jim, we're ready for your motion.
Mayor, I move to close the public hearing. Second.
Motion made and seconded. Vote, please.
Mayor, please.
There you go.
Passes unanimously.
Okay. The Chair will accept a motion, item 2, to adopt ordinance #4956-1494.
Mayor, I have a comment and a question about something Leslie...
Sure.
...brought up. In the letter from SEWAG, they suggest that restrictions on landscape water use could reduce groundwater use up to 120 acre-feet per year. So, George, at what point would it be appropriate for the council to consider an ordinance or a code with conservation measures on new development? Is it at annexation, rezoning, or when a development proposal comes in?
I would think you would want to have any kind of codes in place or modifications to codes or policies in place prior to a development actually being proposed to you. But at this point in time, there is no particular development proposed for either of the annexation areas. So, sometime between now and the time that an application for subdivision plat or a commercial development occurs would be the appropriate timing.
Okay. I would be very much in favor of the manager directing staff to get to work on a conservation code for water conservation. So, we are ahead of the curve.
And Mayor, if I could comment just to that, item G will set the stage for that conversation to begin. Part 2 of that policy incorporates looking at our water usage and water code.
And, you know, Gene, this really isn't anything new. You know, one of our oldest subdivisions, Yavapai Hills, they pretty much have nothing but native plants running through that thing, and that's a good way of doing it, and they manicure it, and it looks like Prescott. It doesn't look like Michigan, and, you know, you're right, we should move in that direction.
Chairs, accept a motion for the ordinance.
First, I'd like to thank Charlie for reminding everybody about item G, where the Water Issues Committee is making recommendations on some new policies for this council to adopt. And with that...
adopt. And with that, mayor, I would like to make a motion to adopt ordinance number four nine five six dash one four nine four, annexing one thousand three hundred and four acres and establishing rural estate two acre in business general zoning.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Let's go to the public. Any input on?
You've already closed the public hearing, mayor.
Sorry.
You've already closed the public hearing on this.
So, we will not take any public input on these ordinances?
You've already taken.
It's over.
For this oh oh one.
Oh oh one, yes.
Okay. Motion made and seconded. Let's vote, please.
Passes unanimously.
Okay, item three.
Mayor, I move to approve MP one five dash zero zero one, amendment to the master plan changing medium high-density residential designation to low-medium density residential.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Vote, please.
Passes unanimously.
Okay, let's go to item four.
Mayor, I move to adopt ordinance number four nine five nine dash one four nine seven, a rezoning to.
Wrong one, Mr. Weaver.
Oh, on the wrong one.
I need to go?
No, I got it. I'll back up now. Do I have to, like, unamend that or un, okay. I move to adopt ordinance number four nine five eight one four nine six, rezoning to SF eighteen MF dash H MU BR and IL.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Vote, please.
Passes six to one. Councilwoman Wilcox dissenting.
Okay, item C.
Item C, public hearing approval and adoption of ordinance number four nine five seven dash one four nine five, and ordinance number four nine five nine dash one four nine seven for Deepwell Ranch's south annexation master plan amendment and rezoning. ANX fifteen dash zero zero two, MP fifteen dash zero zero one, and RZ fifteen dash zero zero five. City initiated applications including all or portions of APN one oh, one zero six dash zero four dash zero zero one D, an area of approximately three hundred and twenty-one acres. Owner, James Deepwell Ranch's number one. Ordinance number four nine five seven dash one four nine five, an ordinance of the mayor and council of the city of Prescott, Yavapai County, Arizona, extending and increasing the corporate limits of the city of Prescott by annexing approximately three hundred and twenty-one point three acres of residentially zoned land, R one L dash seven zero, generally lying west of the Pinion Oaks subdivision and north of Pioneer Park into the city of Prescott and assigning a zoning classification thereto. An ordinance number four nine five nine dash one four nine seven, an ordinance of the mayor and council of the city of Prescott, Yavapai County, Arizona, amending the zoning of certain property within the city of Prescott, generally located west of the Pinion Oaks subdivision and north of Pioneer Park, from real estate two acre zoning district to single-family eighteen zoning district.
Comments, public? Comments from the public?
My name is Teresa Jones. I live at thirteen ten West Ridge Drive. I'd like to thank the council in advance because I'm not a city resident, so you're not directly accountable to me. But as your neighbor to the north and possibly your neighbor to the west, those of us that reside in the county will feel the most, most of the negative impact from the development from zero zero two. And as such, we just hope that you will give us maximum consideration. I wanted to start by letting you know that we're not anti, well, most of us, myself and some of the neighbors that I've met throughout this process, we're not anti-development. But what we would like to see is responsible, accountable, and considerate development. And one of the concerns, we have many concerns, but one of the concerns that myself and my neighbors have is the higher density of the city as it relates to its neighbors and even more specifically to myself and my immediate neighbors in Williamson Valley Estates, how it relates to our two acre parcels. I know that Pinion Oaks and Longview have their own concerns about connectivity of the development to their subdivisions. But for myself and my immediate neighbors, specifically, it's really tough having the city with its higher density literally starting to surround us. We live due east of ANX fifteen zero zero two. My husband's family purchased the property that we live on nearly thirty years ago and built their family home there in nineteen eighty-nine. Our neighbors, Douglas and Jerry Ching and Terry Burnett and their families, they have been in the area for over forty years. Actually, they live, they're, they live directly to the proposed annexation and will actually see it in their backyard. Like ourselves, the Chings and the Burnettes, those of us who have invested in property and homes in the county did so for the buffer and the privacy that it afforded us. So, we hope that you can understand how difficult it is for us when we realize that there's some drastic changes on the horizon. Should the annexation of this acreage be approved, we hope that you will seriously consider development that would provide a buffer from the high density of the city and the two acre parcels directly to the west. Another and even greater concern that Williamson Valley Estates, Longview, and Pinion Oaks residents have is the proposed access to ANX zero zero two. Currently, the city only has one primary ingress egress proposed, and many of us do not believe that this is sufficient to serve what is likely to be six hundred and forty homes, almost thirteen hundred people. If you look at the Pinion Oaks subdivision, which is nearly the same size, six hundred and sixty-one homes, it's separated by Pioneer Parkway, and it has an ingress egress to the southern portion, it has an ingress main, an additional primary access to the northern, and then there's also secondary access to Willow Creek Road. Considering that both are nearly the same size, it's just a little difficult for us to believe that one primary access is sufficient. Secondary access through Bureau of Land Management land is likely to be very costly, and it would have a negative, but it would have the least negative impact to the neighboring subdivisions. What makes many of us very nervous is not knowing where the secondary access will be. Many of us in Williamson Valley Estates think, feel that the most likely secondary access point will be through Williamson Valley Estates. Like I said, this makes us very nervous for many reasons, but above all, the increase in traffic would be very taxing on our roads and also on the residents. Residents of Williamson Valley Estates have already been told by the county at a recent town hall meeting that there are no plans to widen Williamson Valley Road anytime soon, and also that it can handle the current traffic through two thousand and forty. So, with that being said, if Williamson Valley Estates is consideration for access, a secondary access, we would hope that the county and the city would work closely together to ensure that the negative impact to District Four constituents in the Williamson Valley area is kept to an absolute minimum. Again, thank you for your consideration.
Thank you for being here.
Mayor, can I ask a question on, because this access comes up quite often, and I can really understand what she's saying because, you know, that the redaway that got abandoned does kind of point, right, to what she's saying to do. Now, on the, to the east side on Pinion Oaks, are all those lots built out that face this parcel?
The vast majority are built out.
So, there's no way a road could get punched through to empty into Pinion Oaks?
There is an existing street stub approximately where I'm pointing with a pen that was intended to provide continued access at a neighborhood street level to any future subdivision.
Okay. And what about, what about where this abandoned easement enters into Williamson Valley Estates, that parcel just to the west, to the southwest? What is there right now?
Nothing would provide connection at the moment. Any connection of city streets to county streets in that area would have to be done in coordination with the county.
There's no, there's no homes or property owner who's, do you know who the property owner is on that piece?
Along this section?
Right, right, stop.
Yeah, yeah, that area. Those property owners are in the county. Those are developed properties.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay.
Hello again, Carl Day, four six six zero Fremont Drive, Prescott. I'm sorry to see Mayor Protem leaving the council because he just asked some good questions. Because there are people, the one gentleman whose house is right next to that road over in Williamson Valley Estates, he's got a death in the family, he's not here. He was able to appear at a previous council meeting on a hearing. He was able to appear at the planning and zoning commission. So, those people are going to be impacted greatly. So, I'm glad that you noticed that. Also, you weren't here at the last public hearing, Chris, and I challenge the rest of the members of the council to go out and look at that site. I also challenge them to go out and look at that area in Williams, in Pinion Oaks that you talked about, to see this little stub that's off, Cinnamon Drive. From the looks of it, the city would probably have to take one, probably one of the homes over there in order to make that street wide enough to service that ANX fifteen oh two. I'm not going to ask if you've gone out there and looked at either of the locations, folks, but that's your business. So, that's my comment about your comment, and I appreciate what you had to say. But obviously, you've not been out to Cinnamon Drive. You should take a look before you vote, sir.
No, no.
Okay. I'm president of the homeowners association in unit four in Longview Estates. We're one of four units out there. We're the largest. There are three other units, and I'm only addressing my constituency. And we're the, one of the two largest landowners with land contiguous to ANX four fifteen zero zero two. Can you, that area that you were pointing to on the map there, that road, if you were to look to the southwest of that line, you see that lot there in blue? That's our land. City council, or the city representative here on two occasions in an email to me and also on the tenth of September, publicly apologized because city staff failed to notify our association for the first two meetings that were held by the Planning and Zoning Commission. But once again, we're only the second largest landowner with land contiguous to ANX fifteen zero zero two. Because of that, I believe that this should be pushed back, started square one with planning and zoning for ANX fifteen oh two, and let's do it the right way. I was always told, if you're going to do things, do it right. And the right way is to follow your own procedures that say that you're going to notify people who have land adjacent to the projects.
Other question?
Yes.
For George.
Sir?
Annexations, when there's an annexation out there, what are the methods that we use to notify people?
We generally follow all three of the statute requirements. State law allows for posting of property, publication in the newspaper, and mailings. We do all three. We did all three.
But we're only required to do one of the three.
That's correct. And we contacted, we did miss Longview in our first mailout for the first, not for the second one.
And your second, and your second mailout. You never sent a second mailout, sir.
The point I'm trying to make.
Our first mailout was sixteen September.
The point I'm trying to make, is that property had a sign as big as you could possibly imagine that this annexation was going on.
There was a sign posted in the vicinity of the open space area. I'm not sure how big it was.
Was it like the ten by five banners you had on Willow Creek?
No, I don't.
No, what was it, like postage stamp size? For us to see that from three hundred yards, a little tough to do.
I can address this issue, and I provided the council with some, some guidance when this issue came up the last meeting. In my opinion, the requirement of public notice is that it must afford an opportunity for a person by the exercise of reasonable diligence to determine if his property is affected and to what extent. You know, we can go through all of this, all of the notice requirements for master plan approval, annexation, rezoning. We went through those. George can go through those and explain, I think, what the city did. Also, if, if the rule in Arizona is that if a person has actual notice, can't, of a, of a meeting, can't complain that he didn't get constructive notice. In other words, if you know of a meeting and you show up, or if you know of a meeting and you don't show up, you can't then later on complain that you didn't get a letter telling you that there was a meeting. It just, it's kind of a common sense application. So, you know, the, and I'll let, again, I'll let George kind of go through if, if the council desires, all of the notice. But the conclusion I made is that there, the, the notice of the PNC workshop was not received by the Longview HOA. The statute that governs this requires that notice requirements be met before a public hearing. There was no public hearing at the first workshop. The HOA received proper notice prior to both the PNC Commission and City Council public hearings, and then we have this second hearing today. So, in my opinion, the notice is provided by the city. It met, if not exceeded, the statutory and city requirements for this. And I think this is sort of a beating a dead horse for, not to upset PETA, but, you know, we've gone over this a number of times, and there really is no, no issue here.
So, your opinion is that proper notices were given, and so?
All of these, the city code and statutory requirements for notice for annexation, rezoning, and master plan approval or amendment were met.
Okay.
But you made a statement that the planning and zoning didn't have a public hearing. I've watched the videotape. It goes on for an hour and a half of public hearing. I watched this chairman of the Planning and Zoning Commission take the big stack of papers that Mr. Worley has there at the beginning of that session, say, "Yeah, I got a lot of papers here from a lot of people," and he shoved them under the desk where you're sitting, mayor. You were at that session probably, and you saw him shove it on the desk. The committee?
Public hearing and a public meeting are different things.
Okay.
The first meeting of the planning commission was a workshop where no public hearing was held. The second meeting where notice was provided to the, or actual notice was actually had by the HOA and members of the HOA and board members of the HOA. The board, the board of the HOA knew or should have known of the, of the actual public hearing by PNC, which was the second meeting, and therefore, after that, it's kind of a moot point.
Okay.
So, I got my note, let me tell you, I got my notice from Mr. Worley and his boss while I was in Santa Fe, New Mexico, corresponding with them electronically. And I'm in Santa Fe, New Mexico, on the ninth of September. A little tough to get back here for the tenth of September.
I think we're going to move on past this one.
Okay, well, I got some other issues.
The council has heard this. And by the way, I think the entire council has been in that area. I know George.
I'm not asking. I told you I wouldn't ask.
Yeah, well, you hear.
I know this one member, the mayor Protem's not been in either one, apparently.
Sometimes you hear strange that, not totally true.
Okay. A gentleman from, I guess, Goodwin Street earlier talked about the economic analysis, how you had to combine economic analysis. And I have no trouble with annexation oh oh one that you approved. That's good. It's good for town, good for business, good for everybody. However, it was skewed because you combined businesses, hospitals, medical offices with residential. I would like to see one of you here today put a motion up there, asking the city staff to put out a separate bid, to have another analysis done so they can analyze that ANX fifteen zero zero two as a standalone before you make a final vote on that issue. Okay, the land north of ANX fifteen oh two is also owned by the James family. Okay, perhaps they should use this land to build an access road to the north connecting with the James Deepwell Ranch Road. The James Deepwell Ranch Road will have access to the Willow Creek Road and Highway eighty-nine, particularly in view of the new highway realignment that the city is starting this month. You're starting access out that way, and that parcel could easily go out that way, meet up with Willow Creek, meet up with Highway eighty-nine. No need to destroy parkland.
Okay.
We've covered the eighteen hundred and fifty acre feet of water. Okay, for the mayor Protem who wasn't here, I'll read part of the city charter that I read to everybody else at the last public hearing. Back in November eighth, two thousand and five, after Proposition four hundred was approved by the voters. In addition to adding Proposition four hundred to the city charter, they also asked, added supplementary language to Article one to the city charter. For those of you who may not have reread that portion of the city charter, let me quote a small section from it, since it's very interesting reading and has a bearing on your decisions today. Section four, well, this quote, Section four boundaries, subparagraph A, declaration of policy. The people of the city of Prescott believe it is in the best interest of the city to establish additional local requirements for annexation to ensure that any future expansion of the city's boundary does not under. of the city's boundary does not undermine the city's effort to attain safe yield or otherwise threaten the water supply of city residents," unquote. That is in your charter. That one paragraph says a whole lot of what you're required to do as members of the council.
But this parcel does come with water, correct?
Excuse me?
But this parcel does come with water.
Yes, it doesn't have to be annexed, we've already determined, I believe somebody here said, "You can give them that 925 acre feet of water." They don't have to be annexed to get that water, you're contractually required to give them that water. But you don't have to make it part of the city, you don't have to put fire, police protection out there, roads, sanitation.
Is that what you're advocating?
No, I didn't advocate that.
I'll just make a comment.
No, 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 no.
Sounds like you are. I mean, it sounds like you want us to deliver water outside the city of Prescott, and not annex.
Forty-eight years ago, some well-intentioned folks who sat in whatever chamber they used back then, made those decisions. Don't blame me, don't blame, I'm not blaming you folks either. Somebody 48 years ago thought it was a good idea to give water way out there, and I bet 48 years ago, Mayor, that was what considered way out, wasn't it?
At the airport, I just read a report this morning, that we got the first federal aid for the Prescott Airport in 1941, so North Prescott has been a part of the community for a long, long time.
That portion, but we're talking 15-002. No, I'm not advocating that, but that's an option that you have. You're contractually required to give them water, and I can't help that. That's something that someone else decided many years ago. So I thank you for this opportunity to address you, and I would hope that somebody here put a motion out there to have a new economic analysis on that parcel, and kick it back, and then start all over on 15-002 for the benefit of the Pinion Oaks folks, Williamson Valley Estates, and Longview Estates. Thank you.
Good. Thank you very much. Thought you disappeared on me.
You're not that lucky today.
Mayor and council, I'm going to try to stick to five minutes, okay?
Do you say your name for the record?
Joyce Macken, Williamson Valley Estates. I'd like to comment that the area north of the annexation is state land, I believe, so we can't put a road through there unless we get permission from them. I would propose that the council lower the density to one house per acre, and that would save both water and services. Next, I think that we need to provide open space to allow for wildlife corridors between Pioneer Park and Deepwell Ranch. This area has plentiful wildlife, and it's a pretty sad thing to see the deer upside down against the guardrail on Pioneer Parkway. So I think a wildlife corridor is something we desperately need if this area is annexed. Next, I think that, this has already been said, so I'm not going to beat it, we do need the access that does not go through Williamson Valley Estates. And last, we need to have trails. This is an equestrian area, and people have been riding in that area for, I can't even say how long, permission was given from the James family years and years ago. So we need to put trails in there, and council, you have already maps made showing the existing trails on the Deepwell Ranch. And that's all I have to say, I'm sure the annexation is going to take place, even though I prefer that that didn't happen. Thank you for your time.
Joyce, thank you for being the citizen you've been all these years, and still taken a complete interest in the community. We appreciate that, thank you. Okay. Hi, Leslie.
Hi, I'm back. I feel like I owe it to the voters of Prescott who passed Prop. 400 by a 2 to 1 vote. To read this from the city charter, which I didn't have with me when I came up here last time. With regard to the final public hearing on annexation of 250 acres or more, Article 1, Section 4B, 3 of our city charter states, "require a public presentation of the public comments received to the city council by city staff." That didn't happen here today. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi there, Mr. Mayor, Council. My name is Richard Butler, I am from the Paulding area outside the AMA, and I'm here to talk about 15002, and the increments of water that are being proposed to be pumped from the Big Chino. Could we talk a moment about that?
Well, are we, are we within our confines, John?
I don't think so. I don't think, I mean, this, this annexation and proposed development comes with its own groundwater rights, I think, and I'll defer to the city manager that it's separate from the Big Chino.
That's correct.
There is a limitation which exists with respect to this property, and that limitation is that the city is obligated to supply 950 acre feet of non-Big Chino water. In the longer-term future, there is entitlement to Big Chino water, but that water is not physically available, so it's not relevant to this particular, and would not be required for this annexation.
Okay, sounds like something we won't be talking about today.
Okay.
But with future opportunities.
Well, the taxpayers, I think, did a good job today, and I think that the city council should be very proud of them to step up.
Yeah, we have a great community.
Thank you, sir.
Wish you lived in town. Dan, good afternoon.
Good afternoon, my name's Daniel Mattson. I would just like to point out to everybody who talks about the water you should share, if we don't annex it, they're going to put it in septic tanks and dump it. If it is annexed, we're going to require that they put it through our sewer system, and we're going to get to recharge it as affluent. So they're going to develop it whether it's annexed or not, they're going to use that water whether it's annexed or not. If we annex it, we get the water back. So I say, go ahead and annex it.
Dan, that's been a topic of this council for a long, long time, but sometimes the folks just don't hear us. Anyone else?
Hi, my name is Terry Burnett, 1120 Cliff Rose Road. My family is the family that lives right next to the possible entrance on the Williamson Valley Estates side. And so basically, I would just possibly ask that this portion be pulled and voted on at another time, when, where there would be a lower density, possibly, of the area, and the access would be more well-known to what is really going to happen. And I just want to say that I wanted to make sure that, and I, from what the paperwork says, that the multi-housing complex was completely pulled out of the 15002, and I guess that's all I have to say, but thank you for listening.
Understand your interest, and as this project moves along, if it does, there will be many, many opportunities for the public to be involved in lots of other parts of the project.
Okay, on that note, I have a question about notification, because since we do border the Deepwell Ranch property right now, we, we did get a notification. But the, the notification is so sparse and so, you, for instance, I don't get the paper, I've never, I never saw it in the paper. It was posted on a gate, I believe, and it was as big as this paper, so nobody stopped and got out of their car, got off their horse, or anything else to read it. And so us actually getting a notification in the mail is the only reason why we actually found out about it and could actually respond to what was going on. And so, will we be notified in the future of the changes, or when it is going to be developed, so that we have an opportunity to talk about buffers and wildlife, because it's going to completely cut the wildlife off from one portion to the other? And is it possible that we will definitely be notified in, at that time?
George, because of their proximity, will you make sure that there's absolute notification?
Yes, sir. For, for certain types of projects, there's no public notification. For those with public notification, we go well beyond the minimum 300 feet required by state law.
Okay, thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, thanks for your interest.
Mayor, could I ask one more question of George, why is there? I just want to clarify this, because I'm getting mixed messages. Will this connect into Williamson Valley Estates?
I don't know. One of the things that happens with development is, as there are various phases of subdivision plants are proposed, connectivity is proposed at that time. You cannot determine at this stage without a subdivision plat process or plan where connectivity will occur, unless it's something that's been pre-planned and something that will be constructed by the city. Nothing of that nature exists in that area.
So bottom line, they would, those properties are built on, there's no road stuff that's going through there, so I would just come out and say that that'll never happen. I mean, you got people out there that don't want it won, never's a finality.
Just to clarify too, the preliminary plat and the final plat process are both, are public, both at the planning commission and the city council, so, so as George was saying, the connectivity, roads, lot sizes, all of that stuff, that all gets dealt with at a, at a preliminary, that the public process, the preliminary plating process, open space, dedicated trails, wildlife corridors, that all gets developed as part of the plating, and, and I suspect that this may be platted in more than one phase or partial phases all along.
Almost surely multiple phases.
So you're going to, you know, it may work from east to west, north to south, however, but all of that's, you know, public process, it's all noticed, and as George said, in exceedance of statutory and city code, we sort of, we err on the side of notice on these things.
John, I understand, we, we understand all the complexities that a developer has to jump through, but folks that don't see it with a frequency that we do, sometimes don't understand.
That was the purpose of the explanation, is that there are, it's not just sort of lip service that when we talk about connectivity and, and lot sizes and those kinds of things, that is a public process where notice is given.
Well, you know, there's three people on this council that will remain that have been a part of this whole process, and for the last several months since the election, the newly-elected folks have also been part of the process. So you've got an entire future city council that's aware of the interest in this project, and I will assure you that it will get proper airing, I know that.
Mayor?
Ready for a motion?
Can I make a comment?
Yes.
Just gonna kind of ramble for a little bit, you know, when Tom was up here and he was talking about having growth pay for growth, I think we probably moved here about the same time. I moved here in '78 with my family, and we were welcomed with open arms. The parcel that we bought is off of Willow Creek Road, had recently been annexed into the city, had big open spaces of land. I used to go up Smoke Tree Lane when it was only a block long, and after that, there was no houses, and you could get lost back in there. That was before Eagle Ridge, that whole development and Smoke Tree. But you know, it was, it was private land, people wanted to develop it, and they developed it. It developed around us. You know, Montagna Estates came in, high-density kind of housing up there on the side of the hill, but you know, the people that work in our tourism industry, they need a place to live too. You know, those are, those are low, are low-wage jobs that, that need a place to stay in Prescott as well. We only have one way to go in Prescott if we're going to grow, and that's north. We're bordered in by PV, we're bordered in by national forest on two sides. If we are going to keep going, I mean, it's to the north, you know, we talk about, we, Mr. James allowed us to ride his horses on the land, there's trails out there, and you know, that seems to be okay, but don't do anything with your land, don't develop it. Well, you know, he wants to develop his land, I think 001 made great sense, because that's where the realignment of Willow Creek Road is going, we need some industry on that north side, and that also brings the better-paying jobs, and when you look at 002, I think the two biggest objections are the density and the access. I think the growth is going to happen there, I think Mr. James has every right to develop his land, and Prescott is moving north. You know, I look at Pinion Oaks, the density there, you know, that's, that's pretty tight. And I got a letter from someone that said, "I moved here because there was, there wasn't very much development." Well, you know, just in that statement, "I moved here because there wasn't development, and, and they built their house." You know, all of Pinion Oaks was my open space, all of, after one block of Smoke Tree, that was all my open space, but you know what, it was somebody else's land, and they have the right to develop that land. I think what you have to look at is preserve, preservation of neighborhoods, which you look at William Valley, Williamson Valley Estates, and they got big, big lots over there. I don't know if there's some kind of blending that could happen in that, where maybe you could have bigger lots on the west side of the property, and more Pinion Oaks on the, on the other side, and have it blend together. You know, that's not my call, but I would, if I was going to be a good neighbor and a good developer, I would try and work something like that out. And as for access, I think they ought to, they ought to develop their own access. I would hate to live in Williamson Valley Estates and have that traffic dump into my neighborhood through there, and I think, what was the number that was brought up? 1,300 residents in that, in that section? I would hate to have that happen to me as well, and have that go through. They should really tie in somehow to Pioneer Parkway, and I guess that would be decided at a later time with another hearing, is that correct?
It would be dependent upon a proposal for a development. At this time, we're taking land into the city, but there's no proposal for specific developments, and determining where, when, and how large an access roadway would be depends entirely on how big the development it would serve.
And, and you said this before, but the size lots are a minimum half acre in 002?
18,000.
Which is approximately enough.
Point 42 acres.
Now, is that the same as Pinion Oaks, or is that bigger than Pinion Oaks?
It's the same zoning as Pinion Oaks. Pinion Oaks has a mix of lots in there ranging from 17 to 20-some thousand square feet.
Okay, I'm done rambling for now, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay, my name's Chuck Queen, I live in Pinion Oaks, 5983 Symphony Drive. The annexation is something that eventually is going to happen. It's a function of living in a great place, and that's a fact. The biggest questions, and some of those have already been answered, in the sense of taking care of, not putting high-density housing next to single-family homes, that's already been addressed. The issue relative to connectivity cannot be addressed at this time, because you don't have, my understanding is there is no developer, no one has put any kind of a plot together of anything of what they're doing or when, and so there is no, nothing there. There are concerns, legitimate concerns on the connectivity, there are two roads that die into 002 from Pinion Oaks right now. As you said, there's one up on Cinnamon, there's one down lower, down toward the end of Symphony, I can't think which road it is, but it, it actually dies into, because I see it from my house. But I do know that whoever develops that's going to have to come in with a plot with their own access. There's a single access to Pinion Oaks North, which is barely enough to take care of the emergency access to the existing homes in Pinion Oaks North. So it's going to have to have some kind of other access, I think, for anyone to actually support it in the planning or in emergency services. So it's a concern that we have, but it's not something that I think is going to, it's not something that can be addressed in today's meeting by anyone here. And I just wanted to bring those facts out, because some people miss the fact that the first thing that will happen is you'll get a developer that wants to put something in there, probably not in the whole area. He'll have to come to the planning department with a plat and go through, and my understanding, and financially, I believe this is true, right now, the city is planning no city-funded roadways relative to this annexation at all. The developer will bear all the costs, and that includes any cost to come across through Pioneer Park or any other access road to the area. That is not something that will be borne by the city. And that hasn't, I think, been brought out quite yet, that's why.
Thank you for your comment. Pardon me, Mayor. Question? To the south is state land where it says Pioneer Park on the map?
It belongs to the -- yes.
Counsel, ready to close the public hearing?
No, I have a comment to make.
Okay. Go for it.
I'm in favor of the annexation, but I'm opposed to the zoning on this one for the same reasons I'm opposed to the zoning on the previous one. That's why I voted no. It appears to me the zoning does not conform to the master plans that have been adopted. If you look at the Prescott West Airport conceptual master plan, maybe you could put that up on the screen, George. There's a diagonally, irregularly shaped linear blue area that runs across mostly parcel 001. But there's also a blue area, a blue line that runs across from south to north, 002. And if I can read the micro print on our handout accurately, that is supposed to be open space. And the previous action of the council just zoned it for something other than open space. So, conceivably, a developer who purchases this property could come in and say, "It's not zoned open space. I can build on it." Now, I know topographically, the natural lay of the land is that it's fairly steep ravine, and it may not be developable. But frankly, anything can be developed, whether it's steep or flat. And that's what concerns me about the zoning. I think the zoning action is premature, and we need to go back and redo that. What I really would like to have seen from the property owner is a master plan for the parcels that he's requesting to be annexed, so that we have a much better idea, not just in squares and rectangles and property ownerships, but in something that conforms to the natural features of the land. Where is the open space? Where are the developable properties? Where can you cluster development? Where can you have low-density development? To me, this just doesn't fit together at all. So, I can't support the zoning, but I can support the annexation.
One quick clarification, being on Planning and Zoning Commission 20-plus years ago, the proper way to do this is how we're doing it. Then, the notification of a preliminary plat with staff working with the developer identifies PADs, identifies open space, identifies all those things when a development really is going to happen. Is that not correct, George?
We would follow that process with a proposal for subdivision plat. Part of the process for a subdivision plat review involves looking also, not just at the master plan, but also the city's general plan, which shows that same area. During the submittal and review of a subdivision plat that happened to take in an area similar to that, where you've got an area identified in the general plan as open space, we would expect open space to be on the plat at more or less approximately that area. And again, it depends on physical topography, what's there.
And I think the point that I'm trying to make, and I think it needs to be clear, just because an annexation happens, doesn't end the process. Because during the preliminary plat process, there's public hearings with Planning and Zoning where all these issues Gene just brought up are looked at. And during that process, those plans can be changed and altered before they come to council for two public hearings. Then, after that, is a final plat stage where you have public hearings again at Planning and Zoning Commission if the director asks there to be any, if there's substantial change and alters the plan that the public was led to believe is going to happen. If that changes, then there has to be a trigger which will happen for more public hearings. So, I'm just trying to assure people, as well as Gene, that the process that's set out by law with annexation and preliminary plat, all those preliminary plat things start happening when a developer comes with a notion that they're going to build. And that's when you ask the questions about larger lot sizes on Williamson Valley side. That's when you look at access. That's when you look at open space. That's when you look at planned area developments. All that does not happen during annexation. It's down the road.
Charlie?
Mayor, thank you. Surprisingly, during both these public hearings, I've been quiet, which is abnormal. I've been reading through the public comment. I've had the opportunity to go out and visit the area, look at some of these street questions and issues. And ultimately, from my role as a city councilperson, I would tell you that the annexation is in the best interest of every citizen in Prescott and the surrounding areas. If this isn't annexed with a two-acre minimum zoning, a developer could come in and do 40-acre splits, and they could be wildcat split all the way down to the two-acre minimum that's currently in place. They can use septic tanks, use city water, which we cannot reclaim through effluent and recharge. To that point, we have recovery wells for our recharge ponds that are within very close proximity. We don't wait for it to go all the way out to Chino Valley. That's something that we've looked at diligently over the years. I am concerned about the access through Williamson Valley Estates and Pinion Oaks. Inevitably, through the process, once this property is annexed into the city, there are numerous opportunities for the public to make their comments and their concerns known. I think likely, given the size of the street that would be required, a traffic impact analysis would likely be done, which would be something that would be open to scrutiny, not only of the public, but a future council. I think it's also important to realize that any developer that's looking at this site and anybody who would be considering developing this site would be cognizant of the difference between the Williamson Valley Estate lot size and the Pinion Oak lot size. There are projects in our surrounding communities that have been developed that have realized that a buffer zoning is appropriate. And ultimately, given the size of this, I would expect that this would come back to a future council as probably a PAD that would look at the open space concerns, that would find a long-term traffic solution. The street that comes in off Pinion Oaks, there's no doubt about it. It's a small street. But when you look at it, when that was developed, somebody had the intention that that was going to continue through. Now, the question becomes through the traffic impact analysis at a future date, what is the neighborhood in this development that could impact that road? And frankly, looking at it from a circulation standpoint, and if you try to travel that distance all the way back out of Pinion Oaks, I don't expect that you will see much of any traffic at all. Most of this is going to come through smart planning, community input, input from the surrounding neighbors during that public process. Again, I've had the opportunity to read the concerns. I appreciate what CWAG's brought to the table. It's something that we, as a community, need to address, and we're setting the stage for that to happen. I will be voting in favor of it because I believe that it being in the city is better than it being in the county and having no regulation, if you will, over what will happen with the city's water that will ultimately serve a wildcat subdivision. Thank you.
Thank you, Charlie.
Chris? Yeah, Mayor, just wanted to add, you know, when we were talking about the general plan, we are going away from the general plan with this because we yanked the affordable housing out of it. Now, we're going to make it big lots, but that's a whole different section. And I think most of these concerns that are brought up are exactly going to come when a developer comes with a plan to put this stuff in. And I just would advise everyone to be diligent when it comes up and keep the communication lines open. When we were talking earlier about the gentleman that has the HOA, and he missed the first notice, and, but we did everything that we were supposed to do, I think that has to have a little asterisk that said, "Well, it would have been nice if he would have got the first notice, too." Just watch what goes on in the future. I think I'm going to vote for the annexation, but be careful on the access. Talk with your -- I see some of your county supervisors are here, too. Talk with them, too. And they can help you keep an eye on what happens with the city, and they can make you aware when anything happens with that as well.
Okay. We're going to move along. Do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
Mayor, move to close the public hearing.
Second. Motion made and seconded. Vote, please.
Passes unanimously.
Okay. Do we have a motion to adopt the ordinance?
Mayor, move to adopt ordinance number 4957-1495, annexing 321.04 acres and establishing rule two estate, excuse me, rule estate two-acre zoning.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Vote, please.
Passes unanimously.
We have a motion for item three.
Mayor, move to approve MP 15-001, amendment of master plan, changing medium-high-density residential designation to low-medium-density residential.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Vote, please.
Passes six to one. Councilwoman Wilcox dissenting.
Okay. Item four.
Mayor, I move to adopt ordinance number 4959-1497, rezoning to single-family 18.
Second. Motion made and seconded. Vote, please.
Passes six to one. Councilwoman Wilcox dissenting.
Let's move along to item D.
Item D, award of city contract number 2015-096 to Shepherd Wesnitzer Incorporated for design and post-design engineering services for the Robinson Drive Reconstruction Project in an amount not to exceed $189,146. One-Cent Streets and Open Space Fund, Water and Sewer Funds.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of council. The next item for your consideration is a contract professional services agreement, design and post-design services for, with Shepherd Wesnitzer for $189,146. Just a little bit of background, for many years, Robinson Drive between Gurley and South City Limits had been in need of roadway drainage, water, and wastewater improvements. Back in 2006, design was initiated, but lacked, due to budgetary constraints, the project was never built. We fast forward nine years. We are proposing to re-initiate the project, and, but what we have to do has changed in the nine years. For example, the original design never looked at drainage. The roadway needs to be revised to consider drainage and our current standards. And also, development has occurred along and around Robinson Drive, and so has the city's water model. The original design called out for a 12-inch. We're, the new, we're proposing to downsize that due to the changes in the water model to an eight-inch. So, if you look at the linear feet of waterline, we're envisioning a cost savings between $40,000 and $50,000. The proposed design services and post-design services will include roadway and drainage design, water and wastewater design, utility line relocations and replacements, public meetings and resident coordination, engineer-of-record inspections and testing, geotechnical services, and utility pothole services. The project schedule is proposed as follows. Notes proceed to happen the week of November the 16th, and design completion on or before August 2016. Funding for this contract is available from the One-Cent Streets and Open Space Fund, Water and Sewer Funds. The overall design cost of the project, if you look at the original design, add it to this one, is approximately 13.6 of the estimated construction cost, which it's been estimated approximately $2 to $2.1 million. And with that said, I'd be more than happy to answer any questions.
Charlie?
Mayor, thank you. And Charles, there's no doubt that this portion of Robinson Drive is a train wreck. This street, as you get further up, is disintegrating on a daily basis. One of the concerns that I have in this neighborhood is the way that the approaches on the intersections occur, where the four-way stops are. The site distance issues, especially it's the second intersection in to the left, is very limited. And so, I would hope that the staff and the design engineer would take a look at the line of sight issues and potentially square off, if possible and feasible, those intersections so that we don't have people having to turn all the way around to look and see if somebody's coming at them. Other than that, I noticed that because of the narrowness, bike lanes won't be included. I assume that there will be attention put towards the speed limits on that road when you address some of those concerns. Thank you.
Thank you, Charlie. Anyone else? Comments from the public?
Oh, I'm not.
Oh, okay. No, it's not time to go yet. We've still got a lot of business to do. Okay. Seeing no comments, do we have a motion?
Mayor, I, excuse me, Mayor, I move to award city contract number 2015-096 to Shepherd Wesnitzer Incorporated for the Robinson Drive Reconstruction Project in an amount not to exceed $189,146.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Vote, please.
Passes unanimously.
Okay. Item E.
Item E, approval of purchase of two each, 2016 Ford F-550 regular cab four-by-four two-ton pickup trucks, including aftermarket outfitting from Piero Ford using State of Arizona contract ADS-P014-063237 pricing in a total amount of $182,108.56. City contract number 2016-097 Streets and Open Space Fund.
Mayor and council, good afternoon. Currently, the Street Maintenance Division has four trucks that are undersized for their operations. During snow events, in order to avoid being overweight, crews have to under-load cinder mix, which requires more trips back to the yard to reload. Also, it is possible for the trucks to exceed their weight limit when they're carrying debris from storms such as mud and rocks. Overloaded operation is unsafe, and it can lead to accelerated wear of the brakes and also the hydraulics. The replacement vehicles will be outfitted with dump bodies, tow packages, snow plow-ready packages, and stainless steel cinder spreaders, all of which are available through the contract At the October 14, 2014 council meeting, two similar vehicles were approved for replacement. And at that time, council requested that those trucks be repurposed within the city's fleet since the mileage on the trucks were relatively low. Of the two trucks that were replaced last fiscal year, one has been assigned to the downtown cleaning worker, and the other vehicle was sent to surplus because it had oil consumption issues and a weak transmission. Funding of $182,108.56 is available in the FY '16 Streets and Open Space Fund. And if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them at this time.
Charlie?
Mayor, thank you. Stephanie, is it anticipated that both of these units that are being replaced will be repurposed?
Yes, councilman. We already have one identified that go to solid waste, and then the other vehicle may potentially end up in the airport. We're still looking for a home for it.
Okay. One thing that I think would be beneficial in the coming weeks, because you'll have some new people to talk to, is a breakdown of how we come to the total cost to date of maintenance. I look at these numbers, and it looks like a lot of money's been spent on maintenance on something with only 57,000 miles.
Yes, councilman. That's why they're, the maintenance costs are high because they are undersized for what we're using them for.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Any questions or comments from the public? Do you have a motion?
Mayor, move to approve city contract number 2016-097.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Vote, please.
Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Okay. Item A.
Item F, general fund reductions, revenue enhancements, and cost recoveries.
Mayor and council, since last week's meeting, we have developed for your consideration what is now called Scenario Four, which the, you know, the layout of this scenario is a little bit different because we broke out what used to be a combined column of revenue and cost recovery, revenue enhancements, cost recovery, and so forth, and broke that into two pieces. So, there's a little more clarity here. Fiscal year '16, fiscal year '17. As you can see, the bottom line totals about $1.04 million. It's not very different from the previous scenarios because the difference between the $1.2 million target and this $1.04 million would be the revenue enhancements and cost recoveries that we've talked about at length. And of course, there are procedures to be gone through for that. There is the fiscal year '17 budget process and so forth. gone through for that, there is the fiscal year 17 budget process and so forth. So with that, we have now four scenarios. We're recommending this one for your consideration. If you have any questions or comments, we'd be glad to address them at this time.
Mayor Proton, I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
Craig, could you, I've got a few questions here. Could you explain the difference between unfund and freeze? Because you, I see an unfund under police and a freeze under fire.
Well, unfund means that the funding would be pulled, there would be no funding for the position. Freeze means that it would still be carried as a funded position, however, it would not be authorized to be filled, the vacancy filled, until further notice.
Thank you. Another concern I have is the $40,000 that we're, from the other three, I think, yeah, three proposals, or the $40,000 for the Summer Concert Series. Is that $40,000 primarily for sound equipment rental?
That may, councilman, that may be a little bit misleading. The other expense reductions, which are, which, in, let's say, Scenario Four, for example, there are various things which add up to that $40,000, which is basically discontinuing city funding for the Fourth of July event and issuing a request for a proposal. In this particular scenario, indeed, we are recommending that the Summer Concert Series be retained, but we see if there is private support to, you know, to fund that in whole or in part. So we are not suggesting that the Summer Concert Series go away in this scenario.
Okay, while we're on that subject, so regardless of the amount of what the Summer Concert Series costs, the cost, whatever money that is, or whatever how much that costs, is from rental of equipment and the sound equipment, correct?
Primarily, it is, it is for that. The sound equipment, as you know, when we, you may recall from the discussion before, this is a lot of dates, and if you break it, break that down, it's a very good price for, for each of those, you know, dates for the concert series on a unit cost basis for the entire, you know, sound system, and, you know, some expense money for the bands and so forth, but it's, it's pretty much the, the sound system.
Okay. And then we show, I notice, I'm primarily talking about Scenario Four here because we beat to death the other three. $200,000 increased fees. Is there a plan when we start taxing, feing, whatever you want to call the term, is there, is there a plan to maintain and increase the customer service level to those folks coming in and paying those fees for community development?
Well, actually, that was laid out, and it's been a while, in the October 6, very detailed presentation, and there are really two parts to that. One was to increase existing fees, and then there was a relatively minor part of that, which was to offer an enhanced level of service for an additional fee.
Thank you. This one is for HR. The elimination, and this was on all of them, of an HR specialist, is that going, by not filling that position, is that going to expose us further into getting fined by, by the Obamacare insurance that we've got to track all the time?
Well, certainly, Mayor, I can come up and answer that, but the answer is no, that this will not jeopardize the city with respect to the fines and penalties of Obamacare. It's a matter of priorities, and that is a top priority to avoid those fines.
Was that primary, the, the system we bought, the software, that was primarily to avoid those, correct?
Well, it was also for time and attendance, so we could apply payroll rules to the time coming in that, to our payroll system. So it's, it's twofold, because we don't have that system up and running totally. We're also tracking manually. We have a person that's dedicated to that almost half-time.
Okay, so this, this person that, that we're eliminating, or that position, doesn't have to do with that?
No.
Okay.
No, that position was vacated in May, and anticipating this process, we've been getting by without that position.
Thank you. And then lastly, I notice under Fire Department, we evaluate service and models for staffing. I don't see anywhere, anywhere on this, and Craig, and I'm not beating you up on this, I know that you're constantly trying to evaluate, but I don't see anybody evaluating anything other than the, the Fire Department, looking at their, their model, their service model, how we can deliver it cheaper, better, whether it be the library, economic initiatives, the Police Department, are we looking for volunteers, enhancing all these things? I don't, I don't see that word anywhere else.
Well, if I could respond, the Police Department is looking at models and the way they handle their response and so forth as part of their implementation of the ICMA study. So both Police and Fire do have a formal study, which is being used at the basis to look at that. As far as the other departments go, the other departments have been pretty much in a cutting mode for about the last, you know, since the recession hit. And so from year to year, it has been a constant, constant effort to look at effectiveness and efficiency, try to maintain levels of service, which admirably, most of the departments have done. Of course, the other side of that is that everybody's working harder, doing more, you know, continuing that level of service, and so the, from the public standpoint, it's like, you know, budget problem? What budget problem? We haven't seen erosion, we haven't seen a spike in crime, we haven't seen this, we haven't seen that. But as we pointed out, over the last year or two or more, we have reached the tipping point. And the tipping point is about being driven in the General Fund, about public safety retirement system, public safety personnel retirement system. Not that it's bad, but it's there, and it's an expense, and it's a very large expense, and we have reached the tipping point where we can no longer rely upon relatively minor incremental efficiency increases to pay off $70 million and counting.
Thank you.
Jane.
We have a little budget problem here, but let's remember that we can do something about it as a community. It's not just the council sitting up here voting on a budget, it's everybody who resides in and shops in Prescott. And the reason I put this shoe up here is because I couldn't haul in my new refrigerator and my new dishwasher that I bought in Prescott. Nobody would help me get it into council chambers. So I brought my shoe, which I bought in Prescott, custom-fitted. I can't find that shoe anywhere else, so I love shopping in Prescott. And this bag comes from a local bookstore. They, they have buy local all over their bags as a reminder that it means something when you buy whatever you need in this city. It supports your city government, supports the library, police, fire, all these things that we're talking about on our list of general fund services. So I'm asking everyone who's watching, listening, reading the newspaper, here sitting in this room, please buy in Prescott because it will help us. We just recently got our updated sales tax figures for mid-year. Sales taxes are increasing. We may not be able, we may not have to shave that much off the budget if we could all shop in Prescott.
Jane, I have to ask, did you get the second shoe?
I couldn't afford it, no, I got it. I'm wearing it.
There's some kind of fumes coming from underneath the counter down there.
Okay, who else? Comments from the public? I'm waiting. Okay. Thank you for being here, Sandy.
Mayor, it's my pleasure. Nice to see you, my friend. Council, thank you for allowing me to come before you today. First of all, I want to, I'm Sandy Griffiths with the Executive Director for the Contractors Association. I want to thank each and every one of you for exercising a disciplinary action to continue to move forward services in a manner that we're dealing with the total chaos and a crisis with our issues, our financial issues that were, that are in front of us. This is not an easy task for any of you, and I want to remind you that you represent 40,000 people living in the city of Prescott, and it's extremely important that you do not step over a dollar to pick up a dime. I've watched these scenarios, I've listened to your questions, and I have some concerns. I feel that you're under pressure to make up revenue by cutting some services and increasing fees, and those fees, we've called additional revenue, we've called them cost recovery fees, what they really are are taxes. You are putting taxes on the back of our citizens in a manner that there's no guarantee whatsoever that $118,808 in recovery fees, taxes, additional revenue. We don't know what's going to happen to that money. There's no guarantee you're going to be able to collect it. I've been working with Fire, looking at their cost of recovery fees. Some of them are right up there. Some of them, they should receive cost of recovery for some of those services. Others, I think if they implement them and move them forward, there are going to be unintended consequences, and we don't know what those are. I know that the fees, the taxes, that I will continue to call them, they have to be vetted, and they have to go through an approval process. Again, we have no guarantee about $118,808. My other concern about the budget, and Councilman LaZell, you brought it up right out of the box, are the words unfunded, frozen, and the courier used the word cut. So for our citizens, police and fire positions should not be unfunded. Those can be frozen if necessary, but cut or unfunded, no. We have taxpayers moving into this community on a daily basis. Permits are up. We're on a momentum. We need those positions to be there because I guarantee you, they will be called up to serve us. We're going to grow. We need to know our police and fire are there for us. I get what you're doing now, but do not unfund or cut. Let's just set them off to the side for a little while, and when we need them, we bring them back in because our fire chief and police chief should not have to grovel for a position to protect fire and safety for this growing community. I'd like to know if we change and move forward with this budget, does it affect our bond rating? Nobody has ever brought that forward, and I don't know the answer. I'd like to know if this budget moves forward, how it will definitely impact police and fire. Are we going to have brownouts of fire stations? If so, when, how often, and how many? How many police come off of our roads? Am I going to be allowed to speed on Highway 69 and not get caught? What's going to happen to us? I think that's critical information that as citizens and as representatives of the taxpayers, we need to know those answers. I probably said enough. Keep talking.
Keep talking.
You know, we're all here. You know, there is one other major issue with Scenario Four. Down at the bottom in big, big red letters, it says continual expense reductions/revenue enhancements will be required over the next 22 fiscal years. You can't make that sort of statement. We don't know what's going to happen. So that statement definitely needs to be changed. We may or may not be, like Jane says, let's all shop local, bring in these taxpayers, let's do annexation. We need growth, we will have growth, and it will be controlled, great growth for this community to keep our safety going, police and fire moving. So I don't like four up there. And in addition, I think that you need to outline some further assumptions on this budget. It's not clear at all, and there are too many discrepancies in it for you to sit here and approve today. And my last question is, if you do approve this today, what are the obligations of our new council coming in? Are they able to change, modify, and do something with the budget?
Always.
So thank you for listening to me, and I have missed you, Mayor.
Don't, don't run off. You asked a question. Takes four votes to do most everything here. And what this council has tried to do is because of, we have been working this for a long time, to give the new council some breathing room. They'll go to work right after the first year, as we do, as we did, developing a new council for 2000, or a new budget for 2017. There's more to come. This community does not enjoy the luxury of where you live because you pay for fire services on the side. We pay it out of General Fund, comes from where that bag came from, people spending money in, in Prescott. So it's very different here. I wish there was an easy way. This has been the toughest thing in my six years, of how do we pay our bills, provide the community all the things that we do, the quality of life that we enjoy here. It, it takes income, and I would have welcomed, we've only got two years or two more weeks to welcome it, but some solutions that might be helpful. And Jane's on the right track. Buy locally, it would be great, but a lot of the folks, if, if you want to see where the money from this community disappears to, watch Highway 69 and Highway 89 every evening when the people that work in Prescott go to their homes, north and east, and generally, statistics show that they spend their paycheck very close to where they live. It's a real problem. It's a real problem.
It is, and I get that, and I understand it, and I feel that we have to, to work as a team and figure out the best way to keep this city on an upward momentum. And again, you're all doing an extremely great job. It's a difficult job, and difficult isn't even the word to describe what you're having to go with to represent our taxpayers. So I just wanted to make a few comments on the budget. I support you, and I hope that we're able to make some of those verbiage, verbiage changes. And together, Mayor and council, we will get through this.
We always welcome your comments, you know that.
Thank you, my friend.
You're welcome. Glad you're my friend. Anyone else?
Danielle Mattson again. I just want to say, it's, it's so unfortunate that we have to go this route, and the way I read it, this is still guideline for revenue enhancements and cost recovery, so the new council is going to have a bit of leeway on exactly what they do with this, if I read the recommended action correctly. But something we really need to do is start very early to educate the voting public here, and we're going to have a disaster if we don't find another funding source, and with the way the state ties our hands, that's going to essentially be a sales tax to fund the repayment of the public safety personnel retirement system. I see no other way to do it without, well, I mean, you know, if the state majorly changes things, but with, with the rules the state has in place, we need to start educating people now that, hey, there's no more room to cut next year. And, and the year after that, you might as well just pack up and leave because we're not going to have the place we love if we don't do something.
You're talking to me?
No.
You're talking to me?
No. You know as well as I do. You know as well as I do, and you're not going to be sitting in that seat. What I'm saying, I'm talking to them. People, you may not like an increased sales tax, but because of the way the state has structured this thing, that's about our only choice. And you're not sending a message to the state when you're refusing to increase our taxes. You're sending a message that you don't want to keep Prescott a beautiful place to live because we don't have enough, I mean, there's no more room to cut.
Thank you, Dan. Anyone else?
Mayor.
Go ahead.
I've got my button on there.
Oh, wait. You want to wait?
Yeah.
You want to go? Come on up. Steve has a lot of patience.
As do I. Ralph Hess from Prescott. Most of the comments I have regarding the general fund reductions relate to the proposals for fiscal year 17, so I think I'll hold off on those until you go through that fiscal, or that budget process.
I'd like that, too.
Yeah, I figured. Okay, but some of the comments were just made, it was the reason I'm up here now. What's not here, and which I really don't expect to be addressed in the next two weeks, but I know that the future council members are here, and three of you are going to be here anyway.
Four.
Four of you are going to be here again. So I want to raise the issue that Dan addressed, which was the revenue sources. And we talked about this probably a couple months ago, and I know we've talked about it over and over again, that we can accept the fact that the only revenue source is sales tax, or you can choose not to accept that. Recently, the governor of this state and the state legislature has drafted ballot provisions or proposals to try to get the electors of this state to approve a settlement and a way to fund the education to remedy the state's refusal to, the state legislature's failure to pay all of the education funds that it was supposed to pay. And they're going to present that in the ballot measures to the electorate because they have to in order to amend the Constitution and amend the state statutes. We talked about this before. You have the resources available to you to say, if that's good for the state, if they're going to try to remedy their failure and refusal to have paid the education, our schools what they were supposed to pay, and they keep, as you know, you've repeatedly said, they continue to divert funds that should go to the counties and should go to the municipalities, including the city of Prescott, we should challenge that. And we have the ability to, if unable to do so through lobbying efforts or putting pressure on state legislators, to take it to the people, draft initiatives, put constitutional amendment provisions and state statute provisions. You're going to have to challenge those people, who I know it's uncomfortable to challenge some of the people, they're friends. But the point is, for the citizens of Prescott, I think it has to be done. And I urge you to put, and the incoming council, to put more energy into that option rather than just looking for all of these austerity measures that we're going to, that we're considering. And one last thing I overlooked with regard to fiscal year 16, when you, with regard to the library, when you address the library with Yabapai County, I know that was discussed last week, I urge you not to push for relinquishing control of the library to Yabapai County. If you want to look for getting more funds and ways to get more funds to support it, I think that's a great idea, but to relinquish control to the county, I think could pose some serious concerns in the future.
Yeah.
To keep, to keep the library to be the valuable asset that it is and significant asset it is for this city.
Ralph, as always, thanks for your input.
You're welcome.
Okay. Steve?
Well, I want to thank staff, Charlie, and everybody for bringing these proposals forward. You know, I know it's a short-lived thing here to talk about, but I could be here for the next three hours giving suggestions. I see a lot of them that are up there. And I would ask the city manager at this point, and I agree, and that's the first thing that struck me when I saw Scenario Four, would it make a difference if we changed the wording from unfond to freeze the two police officers? And the reason why I bring this up is, we're sitting here talking about an annexation. We're sitting here talking about one that we just approved in Granite Dills Ranch, Mike Fans Development. And I was up there yesterday, and I see a police car out that way. And I sometimes wonder, you know, when we start getting ourselves to the point of being hamstrung by the state, or however you want to put it, that we have officers that have to respond to calls, and if it happens to be an alarm call, you have to respond to officers to these new developments and these things. I have a problem, a severe problem, and it's not new to you or to staff that I stated that I would not support anything that tampered with public safety. We are the public, we deserve that. And from my standpoint, I cannot support this if those words stay the same. So my question to you is, if they become freeze, do they still have the same bottom-line impact?
Well, Councilman, if they're frozen and not filled, then the expense will be avoided. We've said over and over here, and there's still, you know, there's still a lot of people who don't understand the gravity of the situation here. All those months that we talked about what it means to have a $70 million unfunded liability. So we're at the point where we need to not expend hard dollars. We can talk about fee increases and so forth, which will go through a process. If it is your proposal to change unfond to freeze, certainly that's your prerogative for council consideration. If the position is not being filled, then the expense is not being incurred.
Right. And frankly, and I appreciate Mr. Hess bringing that up because I've stated it many times, there needs to be a constitutional change that allows this community to be able to function differently than having the state with its thumb on our throat when it comes to being able to recoup a fee from public safety services. We do that with our sewer, our water, our solid waste. We have solid funds, they're dedicated funds, they go to a very specific thing. And when the state took that right away from us to be able to handle our own here in this community was a great detriment to the citizens as far as I'm concerned. All the things we can talk about now, I can, I'm looking at the different models that we're going to have to look at in 17. We're going to have to look at different models for the police department, fire department, like you talked about. The models of the recreation department, being able to put in recreation hookups for RVs out at Watson Lake Park, and turning Willow Lake Park into an RV area as well where we can generate sales tax revenues from those as well as bed tax. We need to look at doing business differently in the world that we live in today. Certainly having a positive conversation with the county of increasing the funding to the library through their ability to do that with property tax through the library district is a huge thing. We can't keep back, kick back and keep saying, this is the way, it's the way it's been done. It's not working. And we're sitting here having this discussion. Again, one more time, I can understand trying to get through today in the mid-year crisis and finding the revenues and laying people off, but in 17, I'm here to tell you, and I want to be on record to the public, next year's budget's going to be a very different budget as far as I'm concerned, because when it gets to the point where I look at it and we do line item stuff, like you're starting to talk about the library, and that budget right now is 2.3 million, and this council has to look at the library and say, all's we can give you this year is 1 million, find the rest of the revenues with your own, with your own process. That's what we're going to have to do. And we're going to have to give that same level to the fire department, police department to say, you know, instead of giving you $12 million, all's we got to give you is 9,000, or 9 million, excuse me, and you're going to have to live within that budget. And until we start making those kind of suggestions and making people think that this is real, we're going to be back here time and time again trying to put a Band-Aid on something that's continuing to bleed. It's just crazy. And as far as I'm concerned, I'll support this if those words are changed in case something has to happen where we need to bring folks back.
And Steve, I agree with you. I think, you know, we just got Patrol back up to its minimum standards. And when you start doing these cuts, not only that, but we heard the police chief say he can't keep the quality officers because they're getting actively recruited from our communities around us. This doesn't have any raises built into it either. How are you going to keep those kind of people? I mean, we're going to continue to bleed on this course we're on. I think staff's done a good job over the years since the recession hit. I mean, we were up at, I think it was, what, 567, 580 employees, and, you know, we're going to be under 500 now. You know, cuts have been made, we have been trimming the fat. You know, I think that this council showed wisdom when we farmed out the golf course to Billy Casper, and now we're not losing the kind of huge dollars that we were, and it looks like we might even get to break even. Same thing with the Elks Opera House that you guys got done ahead of us. Just to do these numbers again, Chino's sales tax, 4%. Prescott Valley, I believe, is at 2.83 or 2.85. Prescott is at 2%. We handle fire. You go outside, just on your property tax, outside of the city of Prescott, you're looking at over $500 just for fire protection. Your total tax bill in the city of Prescott is around 60 bucks, 60 to 500. You know what, and you know, the monster debt is still out there. Because we didn't pass this, we still have that huge credit card just sitting out there growing interest, and it's going to get bigger in November. And just the thing that keeps running through my head is, you know, when I, last time I went through McDonald's, I didn't get steak out that window, I got a hamburger because that's what I chose to pay for. And until, until something happens with PSPRS and that gets straightened out, we needed to adjust our, our sales tax rate, and I was willing to pay the extra half cent to do that, to keep things moving while we got that done. But until then, this is real. Steve, I think, you know, you said it. I think the government has been crying poor for so long that when it's really here, no one believes us that it's happening. And yeah, we have to continue to keep cutting the extra out, if there's extra, but I think the city is doing a good job of that. And we keep looking at the general fund accounts, that needs to still happen in water, wastewater, solid waste, all the enterprise funds. So we have to do what we have to do here, and it's going to hurt.
And just chime into that for one second. You know, those five positions that are up there of public safety, I'm not one that wants to fill any of them for one reason, because the state hasn't corrected the pathetic PSPRS system that they have brought us into. And I would be remiss, I mean, I know public safety's important, but I got to tell you, I'd be remiss to put more people in a system that's broken, that affects our taxpayers the way it's affected our taxpayers this time with what's happened. All's we're doing is throwing five more people in a system that's broken. Even though I support changing those, in case something happens, I want the flexibility there, but my God, why can't we handle our own employees, our own retirement for our police officers and firemen, and not rely on a system that's broken where we're babysitting? And I don't mean to be, have this out there the wrong way. If a fireman works for the city of Prescott, or the police officer works for the city of Prescott, when they're done with their retirement, we should write them a check, shake their hand, and say, thank you for your service, and not be doling out the money to them the next 30, 40 years. That is not what the system's supposed to be doing, and the state has allowed public safety retirement to morph into something that's devastating to every community in the state. Until that's changed, this is always going to be a problem.
And you know, Steve, the sales tax is the gouging, bleeding wound that we got going on. But Mr. Hess was right, there's other things with the state taking away our ability to run our own sales tax program.
There you go.
You know, the state is diverting money from HERF, which is supposed to fix our roads, and they're diverting it to fund DPS. And then they come out and say, look, we balanced our budget. That's like us saying, you know what, we didn't pay any of our electric, our gas, our water, our sewer, but look how much money we got. You know, until you pay what you're supposed to be paying, it doesn't change. And we need to be on the state, and I think we use the league for that, but we need to stay on that personally. And I think here in Prescott, we have some good representatives that listen to us, but you know what, someone isn't because the changes aren't being made, and it keeps rolling downhill. They roll it to the counties and the cities, then that rolls down to us, and there's nowhere else to roll but to the voters. We asked the voters, and they said, you know what, we don't want to pay any more tax. So we're in this situation, and we have to make the cuts that we got to make in order to survive.
Okay. We're going to move along on this. The number four is a compromise of one and three. Develop my staff for us to make a decision on. There's a real simple way to do this, and Councilman Lamerson has talked in this, this area for a long time. If public safety takes 73% of our sales tax, our one-cent sales tax, and our one-cent sales tax produces about $13 million, it would be very easy to say to public safety, you get 73% of $13 million, or you get about $9 million, use it how you want it. Number four is far more generous to public safety than the numbers that Jim speaks about. This is a compromise to keep the next six months afloat. The revenue enhancement was, came from department heads. They were given the responsibility of looking at a 10% cut. Didn't tell them how to do it. Where they've already been cut to the bone, they had an opportunity to look at revenue enhancement to be their contribution toward this, this solution. So the next council is going to have six months to work out a budget for 17. The least we can do is pass this, get it behind us, so the department heads know where they're going, how they can plan the first six months of next year, and I think it's a reasonable compromise. So if there's nothing else on it, I will make the motion.
Are we going to change the wording on that one, Mayor? Because that makes a difference on how I support, what I support.
I have a question, Mayor.
Go ahead.
I was up there. Mr. McConnell, as you know, the charter suggests that as an individual council member, I do not interfere with your administrative duties with regards to your ordinance. I don't think it makes a rat's butt's bit of difference whether you use the word freeze or you use the word unfunded. If you tell your two chiefs, guys, there's no money, don't go be hiring somebody to stick in a broken system that the public in the city of Prescott ends up with a lifetime liability for by the way that the system's funded, you know, that doesn't diminish my thought process on policemen and firemen. I think they're some of the least appreciated, highest-risk employees a community can have. On the other hand, our cops and our firemen didn't design the broken system. By law, they have to be put there when they perform that duty. And by law, when you tell them, here's how much money you got to go hire your firemen and your policeman, you didn't pick and choose whether or not those people got put in the PSPRS or not. Somebody picked that option for you. I asked that question once before. Can we go hire gardeners to go out there and cut the trees down rather than call them firemen? I was told, no, you can't. In order to manage that, they got to be firemen. Well, okay, you know what, we don't have the money for the firemen right now. It's just not there. And I don't care whether you call it unfunded or you call it frozen. Fact is, the money's not there. It's the same thing with the police department. We don't have the money right now, whether they're unfunded positions or they're frozen positions. You don't have to be a genius to figure this out. You're the one that brings a budget to us every year, and you bring us a budget based on the revenues that we can anticipate collecting in this community. And we have a track record. We have a track record for a lot of years. Here's typically what one cent gets you, gets you about $13 million, $14 million. What that means is, on our two cent, which one cent is already allocated for roads, that's $13 million worth of road projects that you can contemplate, yeah, we're going to get that. And anything we can go get from the federal government, or the state government, or the county to participate in revenue sharing and all that stuff is above and beyond your O and M operations for your street department. Same thing with the police and FIRE. We know that we can anticipate having 13- We know that we can anticipate having $13 million come in out of a sales tax of about one cent in the general fund, but what you have to discount when I bring that up is you also have Parks and Rec, you have the library, and you got general government that are also funded out of that $13 million. Even if you poop canned every one of those three departments, $13 million still doesn't pay for a $19 million prospective budget for O&amp;M for police and fire only. And that's the dilemma we're coming up with for the year '17. That's just the way it works. I don't anticipate seeing a proposal on the table next year for $17, $18 million for O&amp;M for police and fire when we only have an anticipated $13 million coming in. It's just not going to work. And I want the chiefs to hear that loud and clear. It just doesn't work. And the public needs to hear that loud and clear. We brought an option forward here several months back. They told us, "Take it back to the drawing board." We're at the drawing board stage right now. That's where we're at. We're at the drawing board. Here's what's being recommended as a patched-up deal to get us through until the new fiscal year, and we can come up with something else to ask the public. Sooner or later, we're going to have to go to the public, and we're going to have to tell them, "Hey, guys, we don't have the money in the bucket to maintain the service level that you've become accustomed to having. So here's what's on the drawing board." And I hope you're listening to me. I don't care what word we use, whether it's unfunded or frozen. Fact of the matter is, we got 11 positions collectively that account for this many dollars going into the future. I don't care what the word's used. It's, the fact of the matter is...
You don't, but I do.
And I understand that, Steve, and I just don't care. Okay? What I'm telling you is, I don't care. What I'm telling you is, we don't have the money, whether we use the word "unfund," we use the word "frozen," we use the word "fired," whatever you want to do. The chiefs need to hear us loud and clear. The dollars and cents that are going to come into this community because we don't have the sales tax revenue are severely challenged, and our ability to pay these positions are severely challenged. Nobody's telling the police chief or the fire chief that if the money changes, that we can't increase those numbers. We're telling them today we don't have it. So I don't care what you call it, Mr. McConnell. Call it whatever you choose to call it.
Charlie, do you have anything?
Oh, boy. Well, I'm going to take a cue from Gene, and I'll be very brief. This is the last 18 months of budget documents that we've been looking at related to the city. And I'm appreciative of staff coming forward with Scenario Four. I think it goes fairly deep, if you will, into the future. And Mayor, you hit the nail on the head. We're addressing a little over $1 million of direct cuts that go into effect January 1, and we're creating a roadmap for the next seven months for staff to begin evaluating cost recovery opportunities. It doesn't mean that every single number that's up there is going to become a reality. There's a process to it that will have to be undertaken. But when you add up the fiscal year '17 cost recovery numbers, excluding the ones on the bottom, the $500,000 and the $1 million, we're also today setting the stage for the future council to have a mechanism to address the $230,000 known shortfall for next year, plus the additional unfunded liability payment that we're going to have to make. It gives the next council the next eight months to work with staff to come up with a plan on our service models. That's a huge opportunity that we've not had because we have had to focus on the pennies, the nickels, and the dimes. You all are going to have the opportunity to deal with the $100 bills, the $1,000 items as they grow. This is a major situation. It's not one that should be taken lightly. I have an opinion on the freeze/unfund situation, but Steve, I understand where you're coming from. If the decision is to freeze, I can live with that. You know, these are coming out of five vacant positions that we have two, and with fire, it's three that we're proposed to eliminate. Here, we're going to spend the next eight months evaluating that service model to determine whether or not those positions will need to continue or be modified. So with that, I think Scenario Four accomplishes a lot more than just we're cutting a million plus today. We're creating an opportunity for the city to get out of the pennies, nickels, and dimes and figure out how we're going to operate going forward. And Mayor, I'd be happy to second your motion when you make it.
I don't think I got around to making it, did I?
You got close.
I would move that we approve Scenario Four as guidance for general fund reductions, revenue enhancements, and cost recovery.
And Mayor, are you going to leave it as unfunded or freeze?
It is a big deal, Steve.
I think it's a big deal for the people that work for the city of Prescott, called the police officers, when you're telling them, "We're going to unfund you." I think that's a big deal. Because at some point in time, it says "freeze," and we need to bring two officers in, we have the opportunity to do that. I think the words, the words make a difference.
Okay. A question. The future does not bring the treasures that we hope it will. So is this going to be a lifetime freeze? What if it turns out to be a position that cannot be funded in the future? What are you going to call it then?
I think the future, in my eyes, is something that's probably better said half-full than half-empty. If the state decides to change our screwed-up system, then I would say the glass is half-full. We, none of us know that, but if it says "free," "freeze," I'm more comfortable than "unfund." It's that simple with me.
I think in the next two years, there will be a change in the system. I don't think that change will have any effect whatsoever on the obligation that we have to pay our bills.
Okay. Let's say that the next council decides with our new mayor, that we decide to go back to the public in '17 to ask for another tax increase.
Yeah.
That's a change as well.
The, that same council could also decide to fund two positions that were unfunded. I will withdraw my motion if you would like to make the motion with a terminology that's more comfortable with you.
I will support Scenario Four with the changing of the word on the police to "freeze" instead of "unfund."
Second.
Okay. Any more discussion? Okay. Vote, please.
Passes 6 to 1. Councilman Lozelle dissenting.
Let's go to G.
Item G, adoption of resolution number 4310-1519, amending the city of Prescott water management policy.
And Mayor, just, you know, not this one, but the next one. I have a conflict and will be stepping out.
Okay. Can you do what you need to do in two minutes?
I'll do my best. Yeah, we'll move quickly. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I have a few slides, the resolution, for the resolution before you today. Please recall the overall water portfolio diagram presented in earlier meetings and its distinct pools of groundwater and alternative water. This resolution first addresses an elevated number of water service agreement applications and the calendar year 2015 allocation of available water supplies at 100 acre feet. Second identifies updates that will improve the foundation of the city's overall water As a recap, in January 2015, the balance of available alternative water was 314 acre feet.
Sorry, Leslie, not to interrupt. I'm going to interrupt. Mark, can we hit the button? What's on television is the old slide. Sorry. That way, the folks at home can see what we're talking about.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
The alternative water budget for calendar year 15, as stated, was 100 acre feet. When the 314 acre feet is allocated to new development placed into new contracts, this category within the overall portfolio will have been exhausted, except for minimal quantities that may be returned unused from expired contracts. Just to summarize the associated meetings, there was a council presentation October 27th, there was a Water Issues Subcommittee meeting on October 30th, and a council presentation again on November 3rd. The next three slides contain the text of the resolution, and I will be brief as possible and not read each one of them. But item one is effective November 30th. Temporarily suspend the acceptance of new applications for a 90-day period. The exceptions are bulleted below. Second, prioritize allocations by type of development in the following order. Bullets are below. Three, apply the above priorities to the current active applications and projects that have been presented to PAC or as we have as those current water service agreement applications. Next, develop and apply the performance criteria for new water service agreements and extension requests. Performance criteria means the achievement of milestones for development during specific periods of time, such as the approval and recording of a final subdivision plat issuance of a building permit, et cetera. One or more criteria may be applied. Next, shift the 200 acre feet of the reservation made for residence, residentially zoned, unwatered tracks within city limits to the future Big Chino water source. Along with this current unreserved alternative water of 314 identified in January of 2015, make this 200 acre feet available with the, excuse me, total of 514 acre feet available for current applications and projects that have been or will be presented to PAC. So just taking a moment on this one, shifting this 200 acre feet to Big Chino supplies is a counting mechanism that the city will need to do within the, let me move ahead of my slides, I apologize. Within the Big Chino water supplies, there is 300, excuse me, 3,464.5 acre feet available that isn't under reservation or contract, so there's room to house this 200 acre feet. Six, the total availability for 2015, recapping 514 acre feet. Less allocations made to date in calendar year 15, and to return any expired permits or contracts, I should say, to that allocation. And seven, that will make it so we can resume accepting applications for allocation of alternative water to new development upon the expiration of the 90-day period, prior to which time it is contemplated that another resolution will be brought before council for the purpose of implementing any necessary policy changes or other procedures. So, moving fairly quickly. The next two slides contain the text of Part Two of the resolution. So what we'll be looking at there is determine the availability of alternative water corresponding to the 10th of an acre foot markup for residential develop, for residential development. And this quantity will then be held in a separate pool. So once again, it's an accounting mechanism where we identify the quantity and pull it aside. Prohibit connection of city water without well abandonment. Prohibit well drilling on properties served or to be served with city water. Require new development to connect to city sewer, whether it's served by groundwater or alternative water, if not otherwise contractually entitled to water service. Next, adopt city code changes where required for these measures. Staff will continue to research and evaluate historical agreements for commitments to serve, determine whether these subdivisions or other allocations covered by historical agreements can be shifted to current and committed groundwater demand. Next, review and adjust the availability and pricing of water at the Easy Street Water Station. Develop policy for accepting assured water supply certificates brought to the city. And last, review current allocation volumes of .35 and .25 for single-family and multifamily, having already identified and removed the 10th of an acre foot markup for commercial industrial applicable to, as I said, single-family, multifamily residential respectively, and determine the feasibility of modifying said volumes for water conserving development. And last are the two tables that are exhibit to the resolution. You've seen these in previous meetings. This is the water service application table as of November 3rd, and this is the other projects that we are aware of in PAC as of November 3rd. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Charlie.
Mayor, thank you. And Leslie, I would first like to thank you again for your effort, as well as staff behind you and the city manager for developing these recommendations in conjunction with the Water Issues Committee. I'd like to thank Jim and Steve both for their work on this, and this council for, at the last meeting, agreeing that we needed to move forward with several of these steps. This ultimately creates the opportunity, once Part Two goes into place, for the city to have a aggressive plan to deal with water requests and allocations to future development. It provides the city with a future opportunity to have water to allocate to projects that meet those criteria. I am hopeful that item nine on the Part Two becomes a reality as the city looks at how that markup is done and how we allocate water on the .25 or .35 basis. But every one of these recommendations in Part One, I think, are prudent and necessary, and I think it provides, again, the city with a strong footing going forward as it relates to our alternative water supply, and as we look at the broader picture of how do we use the city's water wisely. And I know there's going to be a lot of public comment. I expect that we will have that public comment. I expect that we will see CWAAG there. They have been involved, asking questions through the process, and I hope to see that continue as I'm sitting in the audience, listening in the future. So thank you very much.
Jane.
Thank you, Mayor. In light of the next agenda item that we have to deal with, I would like to see number six under Part Two moved up to Part One. I think we have an urgent need to get a handle on the historical agreements, and I'd like the city to hire an outside title search company to get the job done. There's too much popping up as a surprise out there, and it makes it very difficult for us to deal with a policy and allocating water on a reasonable basis.
Yeah, Mayor, the only thing that kind of maybe rubs me as possibly being wrong is number five in Part One. And I know we can do that to keep things moving, but shifting 200 acre feet into the future of the Big Chino source seems like robbing Peter to pay Paul. You know, I don't think we're going to be doing a pipeline anytime soon. That's going to cost a whole, whole pile of money, and that's if we get by all the lawsuits that you know will come by that. So that's the only thing that kind of concerned me. But outside of that, there's, there's a lot. I mean, you guys showed a lot of courage in the Water Committee to even come forward with this. That's a nice job.
And Mayor, if I could, just to Chris's point, the 385 acre feet that would be remaining to the unwatered tracks, my rough math is that that's a little over 1,000 houses. In a situation where I don't know specifically out of this bucket how many requests we're getting per year, but even if we took a majority of the permits that we're issuing, which are subdivisions with different water allocations, you're looking at over 10 years of water if we were doing this regularly. I fully expect that we probably have, with the 385 remaining, upwards of 15 to 20 years of capacity for unwatered tracks of land in the city. If we have a big rush in four years, that could change, but this gives us the time to still deal with the larger question about water and how we're going to have water for the future.
Charlie, if, I think I did some numbers this morning. That's somewhere between 1 and 1/2 and 2% annual growth rate to arrive at that number, which is about where we've been for the last 20 years, somewhere in the area of 2%. So, anyone else here? Greg, any questions?
No.
Okay. Comments from the public? Leslie, you're not moving. Okay.
Mayor.
Well, Jim? It's a noble cause.
I do.
I didn't call on you.
I don't think... I'll meet you in the back alley. How's that?
Good afternoon.
What I have to say is simple. I really wasn't going to say anything. But I want to congratulate and thank Jim Lamerson, Charlie Arnold, and Steve Blair as... and thank Jim Lamerson, Charlie Arnold, and Steve Blair as this Water Committee for what you have done, should have been done many years ago. We all know that it was done because of the situation that's coming up with the vote this next time, did not even know that there was two agreements and two judgments of the Yavapai County Superior Court that allocated and promised and agreed that the City of Prescott would provide water. How many more of these are standing out there is beyond me, but we need to find out. Ms. Wilcox, I was born and raised here, and that was 75-plus years ago, but the, I have a problem with paying a title company to do this, and now I'm probably going to drop a lot because I represent several title companies and have for better than 30 years. But this is something that a staff member can do, because it's just a matter of going back into your morgue and looking through every box, going to the Yavapai County Recorder's Office, and going to the Yavapai County Superior Court Clerk's Office, and finding stuff. We should not be spending these monies that could be spent on police or fire protection. Again, thank you very much.
Thank you, Jim. You surprised me.
Mayor, I move to adopt resolution number 4310-1519.
Second.
Did we get a second?
I think we got two of them.
Okay. Motion made, seconded, vote, please.
Passes unanimously.
Let's wrap up. Item H.
Item H, approval of the issuance of a will-served letter to Bullwhacker Associates Limited for Water Service Agreement Application Number 15-014 pertaining to APNs 103-20-596K and 103-20-597C.
I'll be right with you. Doing some electronics here.
You can extend your two minutes, Leslie.
Yeah. So pursuant to a 1974 three-party agreement among the City, Yavapai Hills, and the Bullwhacker Ranch Incorporated, Bullwhacker granted an easement for an eight-inch water line to the city in order to serve Yavapai Hills, and the easement is roughly in this area. It was to include four water taps for service to Bullwhacker. According to a 1984 summary judgment, Bullwhacker was entitled to withdraw up to 1,200 gallons per minute of water from the four taps installed by Yavapai Hills on the water line crossing the Bullwhacker lands, without limitation as to use. A 1988 stipulated final judgment confirmed the 1984 summary judgment. Water Service Agreement Application Number 15-014, which was listed on Table One of the October 27th, 2015, update on the alternative water portfolio presented to council, and now also identified in Resolution Number 4310-1519, in the name of Diversified Development LLC, is for a 253-unit apartment complex requiring 63.25 acre feet of water to be located on the Bullwhacker Ranch. Bullwhacker has requested service for the project citing the above documents as having created a contractual commitment by the city. These documents have been reviewed with the conclusion that the city is contractually committed to serve the project described by Water Service Agreement Application Number 15-014 pertaining to parcels 103-20-597K and 103-20-597C. The quantity of, excuse me, the quantity of 63.25 acre feet will be reserved for the project. I guess I've been too long today. The water lane, yeah. We'll do this. Will be reserved for the project and deducted from the current balance of alternative water supplies. As the project continues through the city development review process prescribed by the Land Development Code, the final quantity of alternative water required to be allocated will be determined and identified in a city water service agreement contract for council approval. Attachment Five of your agenda is the will-served letter providing a binding commitment to the present property owner and successors of the availability of city water for the project described by the Water Service Agreement 15-014. Once again, a proposed 253-unit apartment complex on the previously mentioned parcels or portions thereof. Upon design of the project and submission for a building permit, a water service agreement will be presented to council for final approval specifying the actual allocation quantity of alternative water required. Last, it should be noted that other Bullwhacker lands remain undeveloped and denoted in your Attachment Six. And these are the areas shown on the map in orange color, for which water service will likely be similarly requested. A complete review of such lands, zoning, and development potential will be made in cooperation with the property owner to determine any additional reservations of water that may be necessary. Additionally, the Water Resource Section will be addressing with the Arizona Department of Water Resources the question of whether this historical contractual obligation qualifies for grandfathering of groundwater as a source of supply, in which case the alternative water balance would be restored by any amounts and placed into contracts or reservations. And I'd be happy to assist with any questions you may have.
Gene, you're up.
Once again, this points out the urgent need to complete research, whether it's going into the morgue or whatever you call it. And Leslie, I don't think you have the time. I think we need an additional staff person, maybe temporary, or we need a contract person to get the job done, because we really can't be faced with these surprises all the time. We need to have a policy that makes sense for everyone in the community so that we can deal with future growth. This really makes me sick. Honestly, I know we're over a barrel, and there's nothing we can do unless we'd like to walk into an expensive lawsuit. So I'm very reluctant to approve it, but I do hope that we can pursue the issue of where this allocation comes from, that it is actually, under ADR rules, from the old groundwater usage. That would help a lot.
Steve.
Mayor, if I, Mayor, may I respond?
I'm sorry.
Mayor, may I respond?
Yes.
Just to help with the situation. I understand it's not, doesn't put me in a very comfortable position either to see this kind of thing happen. Prior to my arrival, I understood that with the Deepwell annexation, that all documents had been reviewed, all easements had been reviewed. They're in files. I check them when I have somebody that calls in and says, "Well, I think I should have water." And I go back to a 1950-something, a small easement that went through somebody's property, and I said, "Sure enough, you do." So I think quite a bit of the work was done. I think in this case, once again, water in Arizona has been, especially for the City of Prescott, very fast-moving. And my assumption would be that previous staff probably felt that the easement had already been met. But when you look at it closer, you have to really dig into these things and really look at it closely. So, you know, if this, if we would have seen this as a groundwater pre-1998 plat, that would have been one thing. If the city staff at the time would have seen this as a reservation that was made for vacant residential, there wasn't one made. The ranch at Prescott has, I'm going to misstate this probably, but many units. And once again, you know, if assumptions were made that the entitlement was already met, I'm thinking that's why previous staff didn't bring it. So we do have records, we can go through them again, and we can see if there's anything else of this nature, of this potential quantity that exists. And it will be, you know, everybody knows what document research is about. It's time-consuming, and you got to get it right.
Well, I'm just wondering if there's any way we can do electronic scanning with a searchable system that would do this automatically. I know that's a little expensive, but I think it's technologically possible and very helpful, and could come out of the water fund, right? Thank you.
Steve.
Thank you for your hard work. I know it's a lot of it. But first of all, I want to make sure that we continue with ADWR on pushing that envelope of a 19, pre-1998 water agreement. I think it's important not to let that go unattached, so to speak, and I know you're working on that, and I'd like to know as soon as you find out from ADWR what their ruling is, because it makes a difference of what bucket of water, and it makes a difference on the growth of this community and the direction this community is going in. Every bit of water that we can put in one area opposed to another area makes a difference of how we proceed. So thank you for continuing on with that.
Yeah, Mayor, you know, whoever negotiated this contract in 1974 really earned their money that day, you know? An open pipe with no valve. Maybe that was you, Jim, I don't know. If you did, great job. But...
There were two agreements, May 8th of 74, and May 16th of 74, with two judgments, 1988 to 1989.
And I got that right here. And, but, one thing I wanted to say I do like about this project is, anytime you talk apartments, it's probably closer to workforce housing than just the houses with the big lots. So we're contractually obligated to follow through with this, so I don't think there's really much more discussion that we need, Mayor.
Jim.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for your concern, Gene. Blair and I saw this as a potential problem a number of years ago. And every year, for the last 12 years that I know of, we've been asking for accountability with regards to unknown water obligations, et cetera. One of the reasons why we reserved 700 acre feet in the beginning for unwatered lots, we knew it was coming. Jim, thank you very much for investing in Prescott.
Yeah.
Really appreciate business, people like you that see the vision of what Prescott can be in the future. I, here again, very similar to the Deepwell, where I felt, you know, didn't know we had that 1967 deal a few years ago, and then all of a sudden, here it comes. Then there was another one after that, another one after that, another one after that. Here again, we're going into the budget for 2017 pretty soon, and these are some of the things we'll have to contemplate as to what's a priority to try and figure out on behalf of the citizens and the property owners of the City of Prescott, again. So thank you, Leslie, for your hard work. I'm not aggravated with you. I can't really say I'm aggravated with your predecessor, or the predecessor, or the predecessor, because every time we turn around, one of their predecessors didn't tell us either. So we're working on it.
Mayor.
I, go ahead.
If I could, just a brief statement. Regardless of whether this is an atrocity or the best thing that's happened to Prescott, the fact remains is, we have a legal obligation to fulfill this, so we can beat this like a dead horse, or just go forward and see how we can adjust our future portfolio.
Agreed, Greg. This had to move in a hurry, and I would certainly, along with Leslie's involvement, want to thank Craig and John for taking it and moving it forward, seeing what the commitment of the city was, and then finding a way to make it work. So thanks to all the three of you. You did a yeoman's job. Any comments from the public? Do we have a motion?
Mayor, I move to approve issuance of a will-served letter to Bullwhacker Associates LTD for Water Service Agreement Application Number 15-014, operating to assessors parcel number 103-20-596K and 103-20-597C.
Second.
Motion made, and seconded, vote, please.
Passes six to zero.
Okay. Anything further before the council? We're adjourned.